Good evening and welcome. It's October 22nd, 2015, and this is the North Andover School Committee. And we will start by rising for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As a reminder, this meeting is being recorded, and I would request that you turn off your paging devices or noise-making devices. In accordance with our agenda, which you'll see on one of the numerous screens around, we'll start with public comment. And for those who aren't aware, we're taking any public comments either on agenda topics or any school matter at this time. So if anyone's interested, please step forward, introduce yourself, your residence, and we're interested in hearing your comments. So, hearing none, moving on to our second agenda. Ida, our student report, Matt and Courtney, checking in.
So, things are going very well in high school right now. We're currently in our homecoming week, so we're having all these school-sponsored events that's brought up through the student council, and that's just going really, really well. And there's an event I would like to speak about, which is called Relay for Life, which is being run by a few students at North Andover High School. So Relay for Life is an overnight event that raises money for the American Cancer Society. North Andover High School is hosting its first-ever event on February 26th and through 27th, from 6:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. People will fundraise, walk the track, hear inspirational speakers, play games, eat food, and fight against cancer. Everyone in North Andover and the community is invited and encouraged to sign up and participate. You can sign up on the website at relayforlife.org.
Fabulous.
Yeah, and this week's homecoming week is really exciting, because like all the kids, it like makes everyone feel a part of something. And even though it's just like a homecoming game, even the kids who don't do sports get to participate, and it's really fun how like to see the whole community together. And also, the PSATs were a few weeks ago, or maybe even last week, I don't remember. But it was, it was actually more of a better experience for me to personally take it in school, because I felt like it was just like random test-taking, like we would do on usual core classes. And that made me feel more comfortable, so I think my PSAT testing went really well. Also, I'd like to point out that the environmental club, like, it's a club at our school, and it may be overlooked, but it's really going so well. Like, the bins are so overfilled right now, it's like crazy. And we had to leave out our bins outside, outside of the huge ones, so it's great.
Which club is this?
Environmental club.
And what did the bins fill from?
From like recycled.
Recycled, great, great, awesome.
I would also like to make a comment on a sport that's also overlooked at the high school, which is the golf team. They have been dominant throughout the whole year, and they just won the sectional championship, and they are moving on to states. And Leah McAvoy just won the conference championship, so.
Fabulous.
You took one of my things from the supermarket.
I apologize, Dr. Price.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your updates. Moving on to the consent agenda, I'd like to take these parts to part. First item, we have some recognition for some North Andover High School students. So if Dr. Scuzzarella could come forward and help us recognize some students.
Thank you for the opportunity this evening. I have our commended national merit scholars, and I also have a recognition from our music department. So, the first group are the commended national merit scholars, which is, interestingly enough, based on PSAT scores. So, these are seniors who took the PSATs as juniors, so a year or so ago, they took them, and they finished in the top 34,000 scores in the United States. Over, over a million students take these tests every single fall. And so, it is quite an honor for us to recognize students who've been commended by the PSATs. The letter on the back of their little commendation says, "This signifies your designation as a commended student in the National Merit Scholarship Program. Your high selection index score places you among the top 34,000 of over 1.5 million students who entered the 2016 National Merit Program by taking the 2014 PSATs. All of us associated with the program, joint officials of your high school, and congratulating you for your excellent performance on the PSATs." So I'm going to call them up and hand them their award from the National Merit Scholarship Program. Griffin Barber. Gillian I know couldn't be here. Right, she ended up showing up. All right. Dimitri Brockos. Dimitri?
No, Dimitri.
Soccer. Oh, we did have one soccer player. Mia Drury? No, Mia. And, is it Andy John? Yes.
Andy, okay.
Yungji Koo? Adam Magletta? And Lucy Yu. And the next award is a really high honor that was granted to one of the members of our Scarlet Knight Marching Band and Music Program. This letter came to me in July, and it said, "Dear Principal, you are receiving this letter because the following student from North Andover High School, Devam Dwam, was selected for the 2016 United States Army All-American Marching Band, a prestigious honor, ensemble, and program of the National Association for Music Educators. All-American Marching Band staff will be in contact with you, the student, and your music director regarding the media tour schedule and to provide you with additional information. He was honored at our school, oh, two weeks ago, Devam? I think it was two weeks ago, right? The U.S. Army All-American Bowl is the premier high school football game in the nation. It's produced by All-American Games. This bowl features the nation's top high school senior football players, marching musicians, and color guard members." So he has been selected to this very prestigious group of 125 marching band members from around the country, so I want you to come up so we can get a follow-up. And the Eagle Tribune interviewed him today, right? He'll be in the paper tomorrow. Sure he enjoyed that, and he got his certificate in front of our whole music department, right?
Great, great performance at MICA as well.
Is it, it's in San Antonio, and is it New Year's Day? Is it somewhere around?
It's the first week of January.
Okay, so it's somewhere around the first week of January, he'll be on one of those bowl games. Very exciting.
We'll be looking for it. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Scuzzarella. So, moving on in our agenda, I understand there are no representatives from NAIPAC this evening, so we'll have to schedule that introduction for another evening.
Can I just congratulate the students and let you know that if you want to leave at this time, you're welcome.
This is a good time, yeah.
Thank you, and we're very proud of all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
They got homework.
Yeah, yeah. High academic standards. Great. Moving on, the next agenda topic is approval of regular session meeting minutes. Entertainer motion to accept as presented the meeting minutes of October 1st.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, corrections? Nope, hearing none. All in favor of approval of the minutes, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say no. Five zero. Good. Next topic is acceptance of North Andover High School shot clock scoreboard and sign topper for North Andover Athletics Association. I don't see any representation for this. Dr. Price, you wanted to give us a quick update?
Mr. Mealy, the, yes?
On the?
Shot clock?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with the shot clock part of it, but the scoreboard part of it.
I have the information.
Oh, there we go. Thank you. Saving the day, you.
Back on.
You could just sit there and stay there, Dr. Price, just for a few minutes. So, the first donation to the high school is from the North Andover Athletic Association of Shot Clocks. It's a value of approximately $3,500. There's no maintenance required. The custodians will be installing these. The new shot clocks will display the game time, as well as the shot clock time. Current scoreboard placement makes the game time difficult for fans to see. So, very generous donation by the N AAA.
This is the field house where this is going?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
The next donation from the North Andover Athletic Association is a scoreboard sign topper for the upper turf. It's a value of approximately $1,000. A sign above the scoreboard reading "Home of the Scarlet Knights," similar to the one in Walsh Stadium.
Great, thank you. Entertainer motion to accept the donation of the scoreboard sign topper of the upper field, the value of $1,000, and shot clock valued at $3,500.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, other than?
Of course, obviously, thank you, but I just want to point out, it's a scoreboard sign topper at the Alex Ferguson Track. Yes, not the upper turf.
That sign will be added.
Yes.
Awesome, we have added the words to it.
Thank you for the correction. Any other comments or questions, discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of accepting, say aye. Aye. All opposed, abstained. Five oh, unanimous. Let's move on to our next topic, acceptance of monetary donation from McDonald's Corporation, or McDonald's, to the North Andover High School track. Dr. Scuzzarella?
Very generous donation from the McDonald's, which is right across the street from North Andover High School. They've done this for the last several years. It's a donation of $3,000 to be used by the athletic program. So it's a donation directly to our athletic program from McDonald's.
And, great. So, entertainer motion to accept the check in the amount of $3,000 for athletics from McDonald's?
So moved.
A second? Any discussion? Hearing none. Again, thank you, as part of the discussion, thank you for that very generous donation as well. And I assume Mr. Young will be defining the cause for that application of funds? Great. So, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, abstained. Five oh. Thank you again. Next topic is acceptance of another donation from EBSCO, of a database for North Andover Public Schools.
This is EBSCO Publishing Company in Ipswich, Mass. Very, very generous donation. It's over five years, and it's worth $100,000. It's about $20,000 a year. And it is a K-12 library database that is used for online research. So it's a wonderful tool at the high school and the middle school for sure, and I'm sure the elementary librarian will make great use of this opportunity. So, this was a wonderful surprise for us to get this. Huge.
So I'd like to further that conversation, but first entertainer motion to accept the donation of a five-year access to the EBSCO subscription online service, valued at $100,000.
So moved.
A second? Great, so now we can discuss it. This is fabulous. My simple question is, how do we ensure that we're using it? This is a great asset, I just don't want to go.
I think the librarians, library media specialists have all worked really hard together to collaborate, and I know Ann Bate and Laura Harrington, the librarian at the high school, and Ann Bates is the librarian at the middle school, worked especially hard to secure this very generous gift. And it is 24/7 access, so kids could access it anytime, for faculty and students at all levels in the North Andover Public Schools.
How did we get this grant?
I think they applied for it, and Laura and Ann both belong to a, I don't think it's a Merrimack Valley, I think it's more of a northern, nor the Boston librarians group that it was offered to. So they did apply for it, and we were luckily granted.
Are there any, I see any strings attached, but it seems like a very, very generous gift. I'm wondering if there's any obligation on our part.
Not that I'm aware of, and not that Mrs. Harrington made me aware of. I'm guessing it's a way to have different library media centers stay up to speed with everything that's new, and not have to constantly be spending money on those particular items.
I know that, but the town, the library, I know that they subscribe to some of these databases. I wonder if there's any way to share those resources?
I've talked with Kathleen, the head librarian, Keenan, yeah, about that, and that many towns are doing that, something we've talked about and are planning to continue further conversations on.
Great.
I think this is awesome with, you know, the ability to have just the eBooks. Just what a great resource. Thank you.
I just think it's a very, very generous gift, and it's exciting that we got it. I think maybe in the future, when we get a gift this large, we should probably get a little more, a little more background on it. I mean, it's one thing accepting a few thousand dollars from McDonald's, but this is a sizable gift. I don't know if there's an expectation EBSCO's part for us to do anything further. Well, that means I'm going to thank them.
I haven't, I haven't engaged with you before. And I agree, with a donation this size, we should have a little bit more background. Do so in the future.
Great. Thank you. So, if no further questions or discussion, call the vote, and all in favor accepting the five-year subscription access to EBSCO online research databases, say aye. Aye. All opposed, all abstained.
Because this is a sizable donation, would this be something where we might want to ask or give the representative of the company an opportunity to come and, so get some publicity about it?
Let me look into it, yeah.
Yeah, I'm actually, I was also going to ask, even that there seem to be ongoing donations, is there a process for us to at least provide a thank you to the organizations that are providing these needed assets?
That is something that Ms. Segari and I will figure out.
Excellent, excellent.
And sort of, it's to my point, is it, is that a, do we thank them, or does the school district, you know, is it the chair of the school committee, or is it the, or both? I don't know.
Yeah.
Could be both. I don't know.
Look forward to that.
Because we vote to accept the donation.
Right.
Technically, it's.
So maybe it's the school committee, but let me look into it.
Could be, thank you.
Same, same lady does the.
Yes, the same person's going to write the notes.
Better.
All things come back to bed.
For those watching, you know.
Great. So, moving on, just a couple of quick items on the chair report. It was my pleasure to attend the Health Advisory Committee yesterday, where members of the school health organization, teaching, and the North Andover Health Department, as well as representative from the Board of Selectmen, Phil DeColigero was there, looked at community needs, health promotion and prevention. One of the interesting conversations was the interest in starting a Needs Assessment Task Force, looking at opiate abuse and opiate use, which is a growing concern in many communities. There is evidence that we are not, we are not alone, and we are not exempt from such activities. And I think it's a worthwhile activity for us to involve, be involved, since we do participate in the, in the education aspects of healthy living and prevention. So, we look forward to the Board of Selectmen identifying what their objectives and their charter are for this task force, and if they are interested in support either from the board here or from the school department to make that available. I think it's a very worthwhile activity.
Agreed.
So, there'll also be other reporting coming shortly with the health update from our lead nurse, Ms. Barzac. So, there are some activities ongoing, I don't want to steal her thunder, but some very good updates on preparation for the flu and cold season coming up, as well as other activities and reporting out that we'll be getting shortly. The other update I want to provide, we did have the pleasure of meeting with Mr. Landry and Ms. Broderick prior to this meeting. These are the co-presidents of the North Andover Teachers Association. The intent of the meeting was to ensure and reaffirm our open, positive, and collaborative relationship, as well as to identify the opportunity to check in on a, on a seasonal basis. So we're looking forward to meeting on a spring and fall basis minimally. And the intent there is, again, to verify any memorandum of understanding, topics that need to be discussed, or more importantly, to identify priorities in preparation for our contract renewal process, which should be starting up in the fall coming after the winter. So, I thought it was a very positive meeting, myself, Mr.?
McDevitt.
Thank you. Mr. McDevitt and Dr. Price were on there.
What's this name?
What's the name?
This guy.
So, just want to report that out, and that's what I have for the chairs report this evening.
Good.
Onto superintendent's report.
First is the PSAT testing and cost. You had asked me to report back on that. In general, school had to stop for the day at North Andover High School when we gave the PSAT. So in order to figure out cost, it's really the cost lost of teaching and learning that happened. Seniors had the opportunity to go visit colleges or other opportunities for post-secondary or life after high school. Freshmen did some work with their guidance counselors and then the school nurses, and most of our sophomores and juniors took the test. So that was the day. As you know, that was the day of every high school in America. And many superintendents and principals I talked to who tried to continue school on a regular basis, said that they wouldn't do that again, that it was just very challenging to try to do both. There was an additional cost, because the SAT took longer than we anticipated, and given that it was a early release day, that day, we ended up having to bring seven additional buses back to the high school, because the directions were quite complicated, I'm looking at Dr. Scuzzarella over there, and took longer than anticipated. So unfortunately, the kids were out past the 1:00 end of school, so we did some incredible fancy footwork, thanks to Pam and Transportation. We're able to bring buses back a little bit after 2:00 for the students who had taken the extra time. So that was an additional seven buses. My plan is to send that bill to the college board. I am not anticipating any payment, but I'm still going to send the bill to the college board. Thank you.
You could also send it to the Eagle Tribune, too.
The last thing is tomorrow, I'm very excited to announce that Michael Smolak approached the district and said that this is an important week of farm to school. The idea, you know, he's done farm to table, this is now farm to school, and he would like to, they've had a very plentiful year at Smolak Farms this year, with more apples than they traditionally have had. And they, he wanted to donate apples to all the students here in the North Andover Public Schools. So, I'm excited to announce that tomorrow morning, we are going to be on a tractor and a hayride, starting out at Smolak Farms at 7:15 in the morning. And Michael, myself, and some others will be delivering apples to every elementary school here in the, in North Andover tomorrow. We have a schedule, I'm looking at our elementary school principals, they came today, they know where they're parking, they know what they're doing. And in each school, we are going to do a community-wide crunch at a certain time. And we're excited about the opportunity to do this and to really talk to kids about healthy eating. So that is, one concern, of course, is any student who has an apple allergy, all of those families have been contacted, and we have come up with alternative plans for those kids. There are three kids in the district who have an apple allergy, and we've taken that into account.
And this is connected to the Common Four?
Very good, very good.
Mr. Landry, very good, very good. So, it should be a fun day tomorrow, and we're looking forward to a community-wide crunch.
Can I ask you a quick question on the PSAT?
Yes.
They're also done in the spring as well, correct?
So, no. PSAT is, that is the SAT that is done on the spring?
It's just once a year?
Once a year.
All right, because somebody's not saying it was twice.
And the PSAT, the college board has said that this is a one-year-only pilot. My guess is that it will have been deemed so successful that it will be more than a one-year pilot, but that is just a slightly educated guess.
So with a tinge of sarcasm?
Yeah, well, we've got MCAS 2.0, which I had said that I thought was going to happen last month, so we'll see.
So with that, with that as a backdrop, if we do get indication of another, I don't want to say wasted day, but a stressful, a stressful day for the school department, we might want to think about our professional development schedule, so we don't have the early release overlapping.
Absolutely. We would absolutely need to do that, and make sure that the two work coordinated.
What percentage of the sophomores and juniors do you think took the test?
Dr. Scuzzarella? What percentage of the students took the test?
We have less than 100 students in both grades not taking the test. So, there, the sophomores are close to 400 kids, and the juniors are about 340. So altogether, we had less than 100 not take the test.
Eighty.
We picked up an extra 100 students taking the test, because it was given on the Wednesday. And I'm sure that is the case at many suburban high schools, who typically offered it on the Saturday only. The cities have offered it on the weekday for a long time in a lot of areas, but, so we definitely had more students opt to take it than we would if we offered on a Saturday, because kids work and they have other obligations on the weekends, but on a school day, they're supposed to be in school. So, we had to just have a small amount of kids to have something for them to do.
So just one more question. There are some schools, districts, that use this as sort of a standardized test, and they pay to have all their students take it.
Correct.
If, if your view comes true, which is we continue to have it year by year during the school day, is that something we might want to consider, to give us another data point?
Well, we get the data whether we pay for it or not.
But if we had everybody get tested?
If we had everybody get tested, we would have to pay for it.
Yes, but I mean, would that be a useful thing to do, and, you know, would we want to think about that?
I would like to think about that before I answered that question.
Okay.
Because the cost would not be insignificant.
I understand, I understand.
Anything else on superintendent's report?
That's it.
Great. So with the, with the committee's approval, I'd like to take the new business, old business out of order, and take our new business for, I guess, first is approval for sponsorship agreement terms and acceptance of a monetary donation from Pfizer. We have a presentation from our NAIPAC representative that might be able to talk to this.
Good evening. I'm Wendy Reed.
Yeah, feel free.
Join us.
Yes, please.
We're both parent volunteers with the North Andover Parent Resource Network, and we did put together some information. Did that all go out to all of you?
Yes.
Okay, so you have a little bit of background. I've been involved with the group since the beginning, so I guess I'm the old veteran. And we were fortunate to have several new volunteers. Join us this year, and Kim is one of those. We have put, we've been doing this for about seven years. Our main goal is parent education. We offer programs in the evening. Because we receive donations from PTO groups and many other groups, and many other groups in the community, we are able to offer them free of charge and open to the whole public, mainly focusing on topics that parents face raising families today. Our first event is next week. Dr. Price is presenting "The Growth Mindset: Supporting Our Students for Success." It's going to be held in the high school cafeteria, the 28th, 7:00. There'll be a presentation, a marshmallow challenge, and discussion all about the growth mindset, based on Carol Dweck's book, "Just a New Way of Helping to Support Our Kids," and should be very interesting. We are also offering free childcare, thanks to the youth center peer group. So, that's something new for us this year. We'll also be recording it for the cam station. The reason we're here tonight is our budget has mainly been around $5,000 to $6,000 a year, but this year, we're venturing into new ground to bring well-known, nationally-known New York Times bestseller author Bruce Feeler. We've had very high recommendations of his program called Secrets of Happy Families. When we did a survey in the spring of parents and educators, this topic scored really high, and he cost a lot of money. So, we were, went into the community and solicited donations, about 10, 11 donations, to help pay specifically for his speaker fee. And we were very fortunate that Kim was able to secure a very generous $1,700 donation towards this. And this whole process has been a whole evolution with this donation. I'll let Kim just speak briefly about what's needed in order for us to accept this. I will say that all of our funds are handled with community programs through a revolving account.
Okay, so, I work at Pfizer, and I was able to secure the $1,700. Unfortunately, it's not as easy as saying, okay, we can just give $1,700 for this particular speaker. So it is our standard procedure that whenever we do give donations, that we have to have either, an agreement needs to be signed. So we are here today because the sponsorship agreement needs to be signed in order for the payment to be processed.
And looking it over, it's a pretty basic business agreement, just due to the nature of the Pfizer business. I think the primary issue has been use of the logo, and we just want to make, we do intend to thank all of our sponsors by having them listed on the publicity. We'll have a program the night to hand out to parents that will thank the sponsors. And the logo's going to be used specifically from October 28th, when we'll start publicity for the November event, right up to the November event. So that's, it's a short duration, that their logo will actually be used on the publicity. Does anybody have any questions, having reviewed the agreement on anything in there that was unusual or unexpected?
I can tell you that we have had it reviewed. It doesn't obligate us any further than, you know, this, this particular donation and event. And as they said, it's only, I can tell you, when I first saw it, I was like, oh, I don't want any part of this. But I had it reviewed, it's fine, and the logo is only on the promotional material that goes out along with any other sponsors.
Yeah, the agreement is consistent. I work also in a healthcare company. The federal regulations on Sunshine Act and disclosure are very clear. I understand the need for it, and I too didn't see any major issues. It's very consistent, but we request when we're doing philanthropy as well. Any other questions or comments?
Just basically, for $1,700, we're just giving them promotional use, that's it? That's basically it?
So I, I'm sorry to-
I'm just, who signs this? Is this you, is this Dr. Price?
That's a good question. We're receiving a donation exceeding $1,000, so I think it does come before the board.
Right.
And the stipulation is that there's an agreement for, I guess, use of publicity and application of the funds to a specific purpose. So, I would say that's me.
Okay.
My fundamental question is typically, we'll get first reading and make a decision and make the, make the vote on the second meeting. Our next meeting is actually November 12th, if I recall.
Correct.
And I know that this presentation is November 17th.
They want to start publicity on the 28th of this month.
Yeah, they don't want publicity right away.
Have a letter that we will request them to suspend the rules, so that they could have the information on 28th.
Also, in order for the payment to be processed, it needs, it would take a while. So it's not as if the payment is going to be issued tomorrow. It's typically 60 to 75 net days in order for the payment to be processed.
So does Lisa Phelan knows that?
Yes.
Okay.
We do.
Great.
So I would just say, this is, as I said, this is sponsorship agreement, it's not a donation. I mean, they're getting something in return for the money, and obviously, they're going to get their share before we get our share, quite frankly, right? We're not going to get paid till after January 1st, probably.
Well, I am the one that will be processing the payment, so I-
Oh, great.
I could argue that.
You're excused right now, you can take care of that.
So actually, it could, I can process it whereby it will come before January. It will be processed within this year.
Yeah.
And in terms of covering the speaker fee, the speaker fee for our end is $10,000 plus travel, which is actually a negotiated reduced fee, because he's doing back-to-back presentations, one at his school in Concord, and then the next night here. So he did give us a better fee because of that back-to-back. But we receive contributions every year from each school PTO, the Youth and Recreation Services, Community Programs, NAPRAM. So that money that has come in will float us to pay until we can get this. So, but every year, you know, our budget, we spend what we take in.
So, I'm sorry, what was the total budget this year?
The total budget this year, taking into this, this program, is close to $1,400, 13,000, sorry, 13,950 is what we expect, around there. That'll be what we take in, so what we spend.
Can someone just explain to you, you're in the Parent Resource Network, I thought, is that a part of the public schools, is that?
So as you explained, the funding for it is housed through community programs.
We have to solicit-
He's not a school department organization.
Is it its own S T?
Are you a 501(c)(501(c)(501)?
We, no. We have, for the last three years now, the money that we receive from the PTO groups has been put into the community programs and established a revolving account. So when we solicited sponsorships, it fell under the town municipal nonprofit.
So would this come to us, then?
That's a great question.
It's a question that if, for some reason, Price isn't going to come through with the $1,700, you're not going to come to us looking for the-
No.
No, I think it's legit, you know, question, I mean, obviously, we're doing something for Pfizer in advance of them, you know.
Yeah.
It's not a huge sum of money, so I'm okay with it, but I think Ms. Warren brings up a good point, you know.
Yeah, understood. And frankly, I mean, the contract, the agreement doesn't, doesn't oblige us to do anything other than if we get the funds, to apply it to that purpose.
Applies to that, right.
Right, but we will never get the funds, they'll be, they'll be applied to the NAPRAM or to community programs.
Say that again?
Who would the check be payable to?
Town of North Andover.
So I don't think that-
Well, just like community programs, though, you always write a check to community programs when you sign up for one of, that's the town of North Andover, when you sign up for one of their events.
They can't handle it.
This check is nothing we may payable to the town of North Andover, it may payable to the North Andover Public Schools.
And community programs is a part of the school department?
Okay.
That's the next one we needed to hear.
Correct.
Okay, understood.
I think what was confusing was when it was payable to the town.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Very good, and that's why the sponsorship agreement belongs here. Okay, understood. So is there a motion to waive policy and accept, or-
Just suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules.
So can we say it was reviewed, it was reviewed by our attorney?
Yes. Yes. Can I give you a little comfort?
Yes. You've got to protect schools.
That was to just say.
So is there a motion to suspend the rules so that this item can come before us for both?
Sure.
Okay, answer second, there we go. Any discussion on suspending the rules? So all in favor of suspending the rules, to vote on the sponsorship agreement, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstained? It's unanimous? Is there a motion to accept the sponsorship agreement so that we can accept the, what are we accepting now? The term, accept the terms to accept the monetary donations from Pfizer in support of the NAPRAM program?
But it's not donation.
I would just say it's a motion just to sign the sponsorship agreement, that's not lining the packet.
To approve it.
So one last question, did we check our policies?
Let's get the, let's get the motion right, and then let's get a second so we can discuss it.
I make a motion that the board approve the sponsorship agreement that's in our packet.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great, now we can discuss.
So did we check our policies to make sure that we can do this?
We can't, we can't enter into the agreement, definitely. But the way we had worded the item was to approve the sponsorship agreement and accept the monetary donation. That's why it would come before the school committee.
Okay.
Yeah, I just don't think it's a donation, but, so I would just say, approve the sponsorship agreement as outlined, it's kind of the same effect, but I wouldn't characterize it as a donation. I mean, McDonald's wasn't looking for, you know, advertising on-
Double arches.
We'd probably have an issue with that, if that was the case. But I think this is, this is something different, so.
So I think I feel more comfortable than A, it said something specific about for this specific event, and one, sorry, section one, A, because it just talks about all public materials. It doesn't say specific to this, at least maybe-
But the statement of purpose is the, is a binding component to that, and that clearly says an NAPRAM speaker.
It says a lot of things. I mean, it does talk about the speaker, but then it gives a whole history of the North Andover Parent Resource Network, and what they do and the programs they offer.
I think what they're asking to specifically support the Secrets of Happy Families on November 17th, it's not a plan.
Yeah, I agree. Any other concerns or discussion? So all in favor of accepting the sponsorship agreement as outlined in the packets, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? And abstained? Appears to be unanimous, thank you. Thank you for taking the time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the second point of new business, it appears we have some MCAS presentations.
So I would ask the principals who are not at the table to join us over here, if possible, if you would not mind, Mr. Foster, and Dr. Scuzzarella, come join the fun.
Come on.
So, Mr. Gross, I am proposing that we have a, quite a lengthy presentation for you all this evening, and I, as new superintendent, I believe that this is a new approach to an MCAS presentation. I've asked each principal to come and present their data story, as we've been talking about, which is kind of areas that they feel that they have shown some improvement or some strength, and then some areas of concern, and next level of work with that. So I'm wondering if the committee would allow questions as it goes through, if you would take notes, and at the end, we could all do questions, and any of us would be here to answer, because it is quite a lengthy presentation, if that works.
After all the schools are-
Yep, I think it would be great if we could do it at the end. But if you wouldn't mind writing, no one's leaving. So, that was made, that was made pretty clear, huh? No one's leaving, oh, oops. If that's all right, I just think we could, in order to get through this in a, in a way, that would be helpful.
I think we can accommodate.
And so I am in the beginning part, and School Committee, I sent this draft to you last Friday, and then posted it at full event. So I'm actually not going to spend a ton of time on the district slides, I just want to clarify a few things. So if you would go with me, the first one is, if you're on the computer, but, and Mr. Mealy will bring up Slide 6, which is median student growth percentile in math and in ELA. I just want to let folks know that median would mean that 50 would be the state average, so I just want to be clear. So for instance, we're going to talk a little bit more about that, but grade seven, for instance, being a median student growth percentile up around 80 is astronomical. And obviously, there are some concerns in math, especially at the 10th grade level, with Dr. Scuzzarella is going to address this evening. And if you want to the ELA, the same is, there are some concerns at ELA at the 7th grade level. Just want to be clear of what that says, with which Dr. McQuade is going to address this evening, too.
Could you humor me and just give me a 60-second SGP?
Yes, so student growth percentile is, what happens is each student in a grade is compared to students who have scored similarly in MCAS in previous years. So let's just take a 7th grader. They are compared to people who scored similarly to them in 5th and 6th grade. And then all of the students, as they score in 7th grade, are percentile ranked 1 to 100. So all the students, for instance, who scored 240 in, had an aggregate, let's just say, 240 in 5th and 6th grade, they then get ranked, and you get given a percentile, as you rank against people who are similar in your, in your past experience. So, and as, that is, that is an SGP. And then what is reported is we take all of our students, and we literally, it's not a mean, it's a median, who is the middle kid, which can become very problematic. When you're talking about a whole grade, median SGP can be helpful, but when you're talking about a subgroup of students in a median SGP, that can become problematic. If there's only 20 kids, for instance, in the subgroup, a median SGP can be very misleading, because if it happened to be one fewer or one more kid, it could have been a significant jump. But when we're talking about grade levels, it, the mean and the median would be very close to one another.
Good thinking.
No problem. Don't get me started, you know I love that stuff. So I also wanted to go on to the next slide, which is the overall distribution of scores. So if you just look at, I find very important is the advanced and proficient. That is really where we want all of our kids to be, in the advanced and proficient category. And so that's something I look at very carefully. This is disaggregated by school. Some of our schools are going to address concerns, but you will see that in almost everyone, you can go on, this is ELA, and then we have math, Mr. Mealy, at the, at the elementary schools, in almost every case, other than we have a few issues in 4th grade that others will address, we are, every school is higher than the state average in terms of students in advanced and proficient. If we look quickly, the same continues for the middle school and for the high school, that again, we are above state average of students in advanced and proficient. Do want to make one comment about the advanced and proficient, and that's why I use the state averages in the first set. The percentage of students scoring advanced and proficient is higher at the high school level in the state than at the middle and at the elementary school level. And this is because these are competency determinations and diplomas. If kids do not end up passing, and if there needs improvement, they have to go on something called an EPP. So I want to just be clear that it doesn't mean, you know, compared to the state, all of a sudden, there's just a different metrics for the high school. So that's why the state averages are so important, which I provided in the first few slides. So as we look at who is underachieving, or who are worried about struggling within our schools, really, as you look, there were three groups of students that we are most concerned about. Students with disabilities, our low-income students, and our Hispanic students. So I did a series of charts, and I'm not going to go over each of them, where I looked at how those students, those subgroups of students did for the last 16 years or so. Sorry, yes, 10. The last 10 years. And we looked at how they performed in terms of percentage of students advanced and proficient compared to the state average. So for instance, let me just take the blue line on that one that Mr. Mealy is showing on the subgroup advanced and proficient in math, MCAS. If you look at that, we're looking, for instance, students with disabilities, our students are the bar, the blue students, the blue bars, and the blue line is the state average for students with disabilities. So it is concerning to me if we are scoring as a subgroup below the state average for the same subgroup of kids. So just to look at that, obviously, in that top graph, which is the math, MCAS, we are below the bar mostly with special education, rather than any other group of students. And we're going to talk a lot about that tonight. But I find this graph, this is a graph I did in my previous district, I find this incredibly useful to see how are we doing compared to similar students in, in the state. You know, it is my belief that the North Andover Public Schools should not be the below any of those lines. And when they are, we need to address and figure out what's going on. But we are, it's not a state average, it is state average for that subgroup of students. Does that make sense?
Very much so.
I just find that useful. And that's what the next set of charts is, and then the last set of charts is really looking after that analysis that I just did, the students that I'm, again, even then, getting down more granular, that I'm concerned about are our students from low-income families and our students on IEPs. So we just looked at for the la, for this year, at each grade level, how did our students from low-income families do compared to our students from non-low-income families? And that is a chart of students scoring advanced and proficient. And you will see that in most grades, our students from low-income families scored below our students from non-low-income families, which would, which the national data would support. If you look closely in what I gave you, the N's are actually in there, so you can see how many students from low-income families we're talking about. The concern that I have, the largest concern I have, is the percentage of students failing, warning or failing. So you can see, Mr. Limpert asked me to make those all the same y-axis, so it's hard to see, but you can see that we have a lot more students from low-income families failing compared to students from non-low-income families, in both math and in ELA, and in every grade. And if you flip to the next, it's the exact same charts for students who are on IEPs compared to students who are not on IEPs. And again, you will see significant concerns, significant concerns, especially if you go to the next slide, Mr. Mealy, which is the percentages of students failing. So that is ELA, the percentages of our students on IEPs failing are in blue compared to the percentages in red. And you will see that for most of the students in the North Andover Public Schools, the students who are failing, the MCAS, are students who are on IEPs.
Those are the hard numbers there?
Yes.
Above what I can see?
Yeah, so you can see, those are the N's.
Okay.
And it's not the N's of the students failing, it's the N's of the entire subgroup. So for instance, if you look, it's the percentage of whatever that N is, is, does that make sense?
7% or 41%.
Yeah, so the N's there are for the kids in all the subgroups. So in that, for instance, if you look at the N in 3rd grade, it would be 30% of 58 failed. So the N is not all the kids who failed, but the kids who are in that subgroup. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And I did the N's because one of the things that's really important is, to explain, is that we're not talking about a huge number of students. And so that's why I wanted to do that, so that as you can talk about, and we're going to talk now about our interventions, you can understand that this isn't like a huge number of kids, it's a concern. But if we target our resources, we feel very strongly we can make some impact on this.
Can you go back to the question? No, yeah, that one right there.
So, for instance?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay?
I'm just looking at the-
So it's a small number of kids, that percentage?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, 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 yeah.
So I wanted to just then highlight some key takeaways. So if we go to the next slides, and again, I'm happy to answer questions over with any of this data. Key slides for me is district takeaways. Overall, we continue to score above the state average in all grades, as a district. Our performance level remains, remained constant this year, or improved in all grades. We had some SGP's that jumped down, but our performance level in terms of students advanced and proficient remained, as I said, consistent or improved. And there's some exciting areas of growth, and our principals are going to talk about that. In terms of concerns, our students on IEPs continue to perform below the state average in many grades. And that's concerning to me. I just don't believe we should be below the state average. And a particular concern is the percentage of students on IEPs and from low-income families who are scoring failing or warning. And again, it's a targeted number of kids. And what we plan to do about it, I'm going to ask Mr. Gilligan to speak about the first one, because we're pretty excited about that, Mr. Gilligan, aren't we?
Yeah, I mean, we're really excited. I mean, there's nothing more important than providing additional time and support for these most at-risk students. We know who they are every year, and we've provided support within the schools. And this year, we're taking the support to them where they live. So last night, with the help of Tracy Watson, she's opened up her space at the rec center at Woodbridge. We will be providing intervention and homework support three days a week. We just hired a certified special educator and certified teacher, who's an aide in the district, who'll be working there alongside with her rec support staff three days a week. Terry Holland sent us over 20 pizzas last night, and we had, we invited every Thompson and Atkinson family there, and we had 47 kids, nine parents, and two grandparents. And a majority of this population was a lot of our ELL students as well. So it was a really well-attended outreach program. They got to meet the teacher, they got to meet Mike Utley, who helps Tracy Watson. And I can't thank her enough for opening up her space to us to bring support there. Additionally, we have probably close to 300 families, or 300 kids that live in Royal Crest that attend the North Andover Public Schools. We will be having a similar intervention and homework support there, Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays. And that is three days, and that's even a little bit of a longer chunk of times, because we get to use student tutors from Merrimack College, and they're in quite abundance. They just walk across the street. And we are using our outreach intern from Merrimack, a grad student this year. She really, just like we had last year, working with us, and the family engagement, she did a great job, really, putting together the nuts and bolts of that. So I'm pretty excited to get up there with Dr. Price, to meet the kids, meet the families, and we'll have another night. And pretty shortly, we'll also be doing a night where we do something down in the Thompson neighborhood, down at Grogi's Field, in conjunction with Mr. Raymond. So it's pretty exciting. We're taking the support to them.
And we've also started a program at NAMs, Mr. Gilligan?
Yeah, I forgot, in my excitement.
Surprise, surprise.
Yeah. I sometimes forget, NAMs is a Title I school. And one of the reasons we made it a Title I school a year ago is because they're at or equal to, or above the district average. They're about 17% free lunch, or maybe a little bit higher this year. And we had some students that really needed that additional time and support, and it didn't work for them after school for particular reasons, transportation, those things. So we started out with some of our Title I's, targeted intervention in the morning, and they hired a staff member there who's just dynamite, one of the PE teachers, really dynamite. He meets with them in the morning, helps them with the homework and the support. And the nice thing is, he's a constant throughout the day. What we didn't expect happening was that a group of boys really took to him. And the girls didn't seem to mix that well with the boy group at that age, 6th, 7th grade. And we realized quickly that we needed another group. So we were able to put some money together, and now we have another teacher, a female teacher, does a tremendous job working. So we have two groups running in the morning, and occasionally, they may say, you know what, we won't do the morning, we'll do the afternoon. So it's really flexible. And Jones, Assistant Principal, has never seen him so happy. So I'm really excited that we're able to do that for our Title I eligible students who need that additional time and support.
Our second key action by the district is, we're going to be hiring a consultant to conduct a targeted special education analysis to help us develop a really comprehensive, multi-year approach to address this at all levels. I've been pretty transparent that this is an area where I need some support as a superintendent, and I am hoping that I can have a consultant come in and help me understand where we are and how we get to where we want to be. It's going to be a long-term process. I've asked Ms. Carboni to be here this evening. We have been talking about this. And given the underperformance that we're seeing, we really need to come up with a multi-year plan to address this issue. And there will be much more conversation about this at the school committee level as we start to dig into the data, both the spending data, the achievement data, the service delivery models, we are looking forward. We are not, I will just want, just one caveat here, is we're not looking for a Walker Report repeat, where we get 28 recommendations, all of which cost money. We've made it very clear that as we do this, it has to be a cost-neutral kind of intervention and ideas and changes. So that's what we're working on for that. And then the last key action is really coming from talking to our, my elementary school principals, is that, and they're going to present a lot, is really thinking about how do we schedule and how do we think about what happens within our intervention blocks at the elementary school? There is definitely some differences happening in each of the elementary schools, and so the idea is to figure out what is best practice, and how do we work collaboratively to figure that out? Because the scheduling component of this can be daunting. So how do we figure out how some schools are making this work, and other schools are struggling to find the time, and how some schools are doing one thing within the block? And we, after really digging into this data and spending time talking about this, felt strongly that we needed to come up with a common understanding of that time. Okay, so what we're going to now ask is each principal?
Can we modify our process just slightly?
Sure.
I can see Mr. Lippert, and I am busting at the seams to ask some...
District question.
District question. Could we at least have a dialogue at each block, just so we don't lose the continuity?
Correct.
So Mr. Lippert, do you want to jump in? Let's be mindful of the time.
I just had a couple of procedural questions. For MCAS testing, I know special needs students get some accommodations.
Some get some accommodations based on their...
Is that also true for low-income and Hispanic? Is there any accommodation?
Nope. So if a Hispanic student's first language is not English, there might be some modifications around a dictionary. But any modifications that are given on MCAS, you have to show are actually modifications or accommodations that are being used throughout the year.
Okay, okay. So it's not, it's even a subset of this group?
Correct.
That would get some significant accommodation?
Yeah, and not all students on IEPs get significant modifications or accommodations?
So I appreciate...
If it's not on their IEP.
I appreciate you saying that, in most cases, we're better than the state. Is that a high enough bar to be better than? I mean, is that significant enough to say? It seemed to me that was always sort of a low bar. So being better than that, I don't know, it's okay, but should we be setting the bar higher than the state average, or...
So it's really hard to take an MCAS and set a bar in terms of like where you want to be. And I would say that for me, the place that I find the most useful to kind of set the bar is around student growth percentiles. I find that the one place that we're comparing apples to apples, and it becomes very hard to say we want a proficiency rating of this or that, especially as we get into the high school level, where 98% of our kids are passing, so it becomes... So, yes, I mean, however, there are some subgroups that are not even needing that bar. And so that, as I look at it as superintendent, I'm looking at where are the places that we have the biggest need?
Absolutely.
And that is helping me differentiate with kind of a laser focus on where we need to focus that need.
And the fact that we have been level or better performance by school, I would sort of ask the same question. Some of our schools have had pretty low performance. So the fact that they're still performing low, not worse than low, is not too encouraging in some cases, too.
Well, it depends. I mean, if the school's performing low and the student growth percentile is high, then you have to think of that in different ways. And our schools will be addressing that, the significant areas in their presentation.
And the one, the other question is, you know, I'm, if we're going to address the special needs portion of this, I would be a little concerned to try to stick to cost-neutral. It may cost something to do that. I mean, it may cost us money, we may have to hire people or something. So if you came back and said we need to spend some money on this, I wouldn't be at all surprised.
Yeah, I just think that a recommendation of 28 recommendations that we can't afford is not where we need to end up. We need to come back with something that's viable within the cost structure of the North Andover Public Schools.
I get that, but I...
And it might cost something, but hopefully not a ton.
Yes, yes. So I, I'm just, I would only encourage the, you all to not think of nothing, I mean, try to make it zero.
Correct.
Just saying.
Okay. Ms. Warren?
I'm good.
Any comments or questions on this section?
I think, no, is this just the overall?
Yeah. Just your way?
Yeah, I guess the part that I struggle with a little bit, I had said, you know, prior, just is some of the differences between the schools. Even though I know that we've sort of averaged out, I think that there's some sharp disparities between the schools and the grades, but I think that will be addressed...
Yes.
Shortly, so.
Okay. Tracy? Okay? Anything?
I just, I mean, we've talked about this before, but I really think, you know, bringing somebody in, fresh set of eyes, you know, no disrespect, Mrs., you know, but someone to kind of look at it and just objectively kind of go through our schools, I think, is a great step. And, you know, I think when we brought you here, we said, you know, we need to support you where there's areas where we have to make advancements. And clearly, I don't think we've ever seen the data this way, looking at it by subgroups. And so this really pulls out and identifies right in our faces where there is an issue. So I thank you for taking this step.
Great. I have just a couple of quick hits. I assume we'll learn about why grade seven just exploded on math, look forward to that. My question on the IEP trend, on warning and fail, that's by grade as a snapshot, is that trending up, down, or how does that look?
Well, if you look back on the charts that you'll see, that are the ones with all the pretty colors in the lines, you can really look...
That's what it is.
That's what it is. And, you know, again, the challenge is, is the N's become so small that a jump, which is not a lot of kids, can look like big. But as you look over time, you'll see that especially for our students on IEPs, those subgroups, over time, the percentage of advanced and proficient has been close to or below the state average. So that's why I gave the 10 years' worth of data.
Very good. And the last question, I would hope that we can get updates on the statistics of the Woodbridge intervention and participation at the NAMs breakfast over time, to see if that's sustainable, and maybe we can attribute that to performance improvement next time.
Yeah, I mean, we'd be happy to. If that makes sense at the appropriate time.
Excellent, excellent, thank you.
Maybe even invite them in.
That'd be great.
Fabulous, that's all I have, thank you.
So now I was going to ask our principals to go through. Again, I've really asked them, rather than giving the entire scope, to kind of focus on key areas of strength or improvement and key areas of concern with some targeted interventions, so that, again, I've asked them to kind of laser focus on this. So we're going to start with high school? Dr. Scuzzarella?
So the two slides that I, or the two graphs I chose to put under our strengths and improvements, I really just wanted to stress the fact, and this is just North Andover High School physical students, there's a district number, that includes the outer district kids, but that, so the numbers are different when you see them. These are just the kids over at the high school. And you can see over the 10 years, we've continued to stay above the state average, and our ELA scores are actually very close to 98%. So, you know, we're struggling to continue to make improvements there, but you see that we have over the 10 years. You also see that our math scores have tended to get closer to the state average. Our student growth, which I'll be talking about, is not where we would like it to be. But these are pluses for us, that we continue to improve and improve across the board in both subject areas. So as I said, 10 years, over 10 years, we've continuously been above the state average, and our ELA, median SGP for all students in all our subgroups is 51% or higher. So that is something I am very proud of, and I think the teachers at the high school have worked really hard with our English curriculum to make it accessible to all of our subgroups, and that's showing up in our SGP for ELA. Areas of concern, it's pretty obvious. And I chose this graph and the two that you'll see following this, because the colors tell the story. Our SGP in math is a problem, and you can see that we have moderate, low, and very low dominate, just dominate. So if you flip to the next slide, you'll see I pulled out our students with disabilities and what's called our high needs group, and in that group are the economically disadvantaged. Again, the gold, red, and blue really stand out. So we have work to do. Areas of concern, obviously, for me, our median SGP in math for all our students is very low, it's 37.5%. And the median SGP since 2009, when we started tracking this, is not much better, it's 39. So our next level of work is working directly with the math and special education departments to analyze the data. They received the data on September 30th, and they spent an hour at that two-hour collaboration working on it. Next week is another two-hour collaboration, and they've got an hour slotted there. We're going to spend an hour on all of our two-hour collaboration days on data and coming up with possibilities to change, you know, the way that we're teaching, to change the way kids are grouped, et cetera. Identifying individual students and developing plans. The nice thing about this state system is it gives you access to individual reports on our students in those two subgroups, so that we know immediately who they are, what they've scored over the past few years, where their areas of weakness are at each of the segments of the test. The math and special ed departments also have that data. We're looking for patterns of courses and teachers for our struggling students. You know, we work on a trimester system at the high school, so as much flexibility as it gives us, it also can be a little bit of a disadvantage for kids who struggle. So we are reviewing kids' past history, the courses they've taken, the teachers they've had, to see if we can make some immediate changes for second and third trimester for our sophomores and freshmen this year, to see if that has any impact on how they do on the MCAS. Our math teachers, a group of math teachers, are planning to visit the 7th and 8th grade math classes at the middle school, because there are some wonderfully cutting-edge things going on. And four teachers went last week during PSAT Wonderland over to NAMs to observe the 7th grade math and came back raving about what was going on in those classes, and already reporting out to the department ideas that they picked up and thoughts that they've had on changes we could make in our, in our teaching at the high school. We hope to get over to see the 8th grade also, and then really think about how can we address the needs of students in similar ways? Because those 8th graders will be 9th graders next year, and they're used to, they will be used to two years of certain way of presenting math and math ideas, and so we want to be able to pick up on that. We're also focusing on the delivery model of math for our students on IEPs. Perhaps we need to adjust that model. So we are looking very closely at that. Again, we hope to make some changes by second trimester regarding the way the math curriculum is being delivered to our special education students, for at least the sophomores, and hopefully also our struggling freshmen. And the last component is, we are going to try to provide professional development, very specifically targeted at pedagogy and best practices in our math department, and we will include the special education teachers who also support math, so that everybody's on the same page. So some of these things will hopefully be in place for December, and some will be more long-term, you know, looking ahead into next year, what we need to do, how we need to group kids, what size classes work best for our high needs and special education students. So they're really looking at it through two lenses, what they can do immediately and what they can do for the future.
Great.
Is it okay if we keep going?
I have a question.
Can we just quick round, anything?
I really am encouraged by hearing the change of the trimesters, because I know that, you know, if you're not having math, for example, in that last semester, they are taking the MCAS, then, you know, it's been a little bit of time where they've been involved in it, and so I think that that's great, that you're actually looking at it and kind of figuring out, you know, if we, if we need to modify and look at the features and the patterns that are there. I think the one question that I have is, and I don't remember when it was, it was probably in March or April of last year, the math department kind of came and presented how they are teaching and some of the tasks that are there. So I'm just wondering if that was more at the junior, senior level, or if that was really kind of across all levels of the high school, that some of those changes were going in?
I think when Debbie Daly came, I think she talked about changes overall in the math department. They've been working very hard on having the math students do some writing, they're working on a writing rub- They're working on a writing rubric. They're also working on problem solving, and the idea that they now can go over to the middle school and get more ideas on the pedagogy and what's really working with kids, and how to focus in and do more hands-on, I think they're very much open to that. So coupled with what they learned last year, they're going to be adding to that. But we also are very mindful of, as the students progress through the middle school and the changes that have been made at the middle school, that forces our hand also at the high school. We will have to make some adjustments, starting probably with next year's freshmen, because the incoming ninth graders will have had two years for sure of a different math base, where we may have to teach more geometry, we may have to teach less geometry. We, we're trying to articulate that and work with the middle school to see where kids will be coming to us from. We've already gone through that in ELA, and it's one of the reasons our ELA curriculum was adjusted a while ago and has tended now to be pretty solid, because we saw what they were doing, we were able to adjust to it, and it ripples, it ripples every grade up. So they gave you the basics of what they were working on last spring, and now they're really deep into that.
Okay. Ms. Warren?
Yeah, so I think, it sounds like what you're saying is that there needs more time for curriculum review between the middle school and the high school in terms of just the spiraling of skills and concepts. Is that?
I don't know if we need more time. You know, we have the collaboration time available.
Okay.
It's just scheduling the two staffs to get together, and Joan and I have worked on that before. Our staff spent one curriculum day together last year. So the fact that teachers from my building were very interested, because I gave them all the data, and I particularly showed them six, seven, and eight, and sat at a meeting just saying, what are you seeing? And the seventh grade improvement, as Joan's going to talk about, jumped out to my people right away. They wanted to know, what are they doing? So we went over to see what they were doing, and it all seems very doable, and I think my staff is really open to looking at, at the teaching of math in a different manner. We just have to find some professional support for that, to help us through that.
Another question that I had was, when you look at the, the growth for all students compared to the growth with students with disabilities and high needs, for very low and low, it seems, it's really, really close. So I guess what I'm wondering is, is it that the very low and the low, is that, I think it's easy to assume that that's only happening with students who are scoring in the lower end, but is that, that low growth happening at students who are scoring proficient? So I think a distribution of understanding sort of where that falls.
So we actually did that.
Yeah, I was going to say.
The slide before that, Jim.
Yeah.
That's everyone. No, and we actually disaggregated that exact chart based on advanced, proficient, needs improvement, and failing, and it was consistent across. So we actually did that disaggregation, wondering if it was just an advanced issue, if it was a failing issue. And we didn't find anything compelling, other than that all groups were performing.
The advanced kids are the, are scoring at 51 percent. So their, their student growth percentile is just over the state average. They're what's pulling us up above as far as overall SGP, but not, when you look at the groups, it's in the 30s pretty much everywhere.
So then, for the students who are scoring proficient, would there be opportunity to maybe increase the rigor for them?
Mm-hmm. That's what we have to look at, how to increase their student growth also.
Okay.
Wait. Oh, sorry. The, I'm wondering, Dr. Scuzzarella, the math scores of the students you receive from eighth grade, they're not all that high either. I mean, they're okay, they're good enough, but, you know, you're not starting with a bunch of rocket scientists and, you know, screwing it up here, right? You're trying to do good and keep going with the right thing here.
But Stan, the point, the, so, so to truly understand SGP, the fact that it's in the 30s means that wherever they're starting, they are doing lower than their counterparts in the state.
I understand.
So that's a concern to the high school, regardless of where they're starting.
Yeah, not only.
And now they're starting even higher after our current success.
Right. So the, the growth is getting better, but the performance, you know, we still have a, we're struggling on the performance.
The growth is very concerning in math.
Yeah.
And for me, just briefly, we look forward to getting a readout on where those focus areas are. I know a couple of years ago and last year, we were looking at specific students and collaborating down to other grades to try to work with them, and it doesn't look like that was as effective as we hoped.
Yeah, it wasn't as effective as we hoped, obviously. Because last year, I focused on my high needs kids, and they didn't really improve by that much. So we, there's more work to be done there, and we need to take an even broader view. And Dr. Price has brought a lot of expertise to help me look at that lens a little bit differently than we were looking last year. So we've broadened the scope, and I am hopeful that we'll see some differences come next year at this time, based on our spring 2016 MCAS.
And we did do our first district walkthrough as a leadership team in the math department at the high school to provide qualitative data of what we were seeing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. McQuaid?
Obviously, we had some, man, it's up there. Those are purple. But anyway, just a couple, one of the, well, a couple of things that we did, this year was our first implementation of the applied math science class in seventh grade, and it was additional time and learning. And that was the first brush of expansion of instruction for math and kids doing math. But I think what's probably more important is the three applied math science teachers in, in seventh grade, and then the three math teachers did a phenomenal job on distribution of curriculum, and then ongoing, ongoing collaboration on what worked, what didn't, and then how they reinforced skills, looked at things differently, and re-taught when needed. Specifically, just some examples of what they did is, the math department decided to give all of geometry to applied math science. We found very fast that kids can't matter, they have no concept of that, and our previous MCAS scores had shown that. We really struggled with geometry, and it's also a state trend. And then the other piece that the applied math science teachers picked up a lot of, and that's what the high school teachers saw in the applied math science classes, was the application of the concepts. So our, because prior to expanding the time and learning, the seventh grade math teachers, we had, you know, our 50 minutes, we have the curriculum, you know what's coming, here, 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 you know, and it's just, it, it just was not working. We had frustrated kids, we had frustrated parents and frustrated teachers, which, I don't know if you remember, a couple of years ago, we came to school committee a lot with this idea. So this past year was our first year of implementation, and, you know, it's like when you get something in the mail and you open it real slowly to see what your score is. But Gillie called me and said, hey, those are phenomenal. So that was really fun to see. But, you know, we're really excited, because now this year, we're into second year implementation, and a lot of excitement, and already the applied math science teachers are regrouping, re-looking at doing things differently. So that's really exciting. So the other area, Jim, if you go to the next one, our student growth is pretty good. And in some cases, you can see, they actually surpasses general ed. I focus primarily on our IEP students. That's always been a challenge for us at the middle school, and particularly in seventh grade science, too, you can, or, excuse me, math, you can see that they really soared as well. So, but not everywhere. So we know we have some, you know, like I think all of us do, we have some things to look at. So for improvement areas, if you could go to the next one? I basically, that's everything I just said. So again, the gap, and then we have the distribution of the ELA. ELA in seventh grade, as Dr. Price already showed, dropped. Apparently, I spent a lot of time in math, but not in ELA. So we see that in our special ed students, we see that in our general ed students as well. And why did they drop? Some of the things that we've noticed over the last few years is, it's a long comp, which is adds to it, but we're, we're just not doing enough writing in science and social studies and other areas with targeted approaches that are consistent. So we have talked about that a lot, and I actually, a couple of years ago, I had science and social studies teachers actually added to their own evaluation goals, writing I expected to see with evidence, and it got a little bit better, but clearly not good enough. So when the scores came out, we met with, I should say, I met with the seventh grade ELA teachers, great, very collaborative. They want to get into Edwin Analytics, we've already started. They want to look at their, their own work with each other, and what was really neat this year, that I'm expecting some improvement on, significant and fast, is we did some restructuring with our time, and for the first time ever, we have been able to have our three special ed, inclusion special ed teachers, and our seventh grade ELA and math teachers at common planning time. So they're looking at work, and they're looking at skills, approaches, and we're digging in deep, particularly with the long comp. Special ed teachers are already on board with, okay, how did, what did you, how did you teach this skill in learning center compared to another team? And do they actually use a graphic organizer? What did it look like? Where did that go? And we're using that Edwin Analytics, we can actually pull the kids' writing, so we're using our current eighth grade writing now to drive that conversation. And each, each teacher is taking three kids they felt would do well, middle and IEP students, and within those conversations, we'll be also looking at, how can we then strengthen and narrow that gap? So an example that we'll be looking at, which some of you may, we are starting a quotation sandwich shortly. I know they have it in the high school. Ninth grade and eighth grade has used it, and we will be implementing that schoolwide. I saw some excitement today about that. And what that is, is a kind of, it's actually, you can Google it, and it's actually a research-based approach, but this is one example of where we will all be taking this approach, is teaching kids how to take evidence out of the text and then write about why it's important, and it's very structured. And from my perspective, if we can do that consistently in science and social studies across the board, all three grade levels, we're going to see some good stuff come out of that. And in addition to, and thank you again for the facilitator for special ed, because she is a very targeted job this year, and that is strengthen our learning centers specific to inclusion and how they connect. Our inclusion kids, most of them have a period of learning center, and that's where that reteach and specificity on goals takes place. So she's got, that's her top priority. And on top of that, we've added an accountability piece to that. One of my assistant principals, that is her evaluation goal, where she will be overseeing that, because we've got to follow up, we've got to make sure it's happening, and so we're going to be doing that intermittently for that. And I think lastly, is science. I put it up there, we do okay, we've talked about this before. We don't have enough kids in advanced, we know that, for our eighth grade science. We saw growth this year. I think it had a lot to do with our STEM exhibition. A lot more writing in journal was happening in science classes this year, or, last year, and I think that was part of it. But I wanted to take this opportunity to talk about some of our curriculum challenges that we face in the middle school we have for years. We teach science kind of like a layer cake. We have life science in sixth grade, earth science in seventh, and physical science in eighth, and then their tests at the end of eighth. Well, who, you know, they're raging hormones on top of that, so remembering what's going on in sixth grade, they're not really thinking of, like, certain life science stuff. So I've spoken with Gillie, Carol Larkome, Dr. Price this past week, as well as our teachers, and following the state trend of next generation science, and looking at a spiral approach, where they would get little pieces of it in all three grades. Clearly, we'll be coming to the school committee often to move that forward with options and what that looks like. But I just wanted to bring that up tonight, is something that you will probably be seeing as far as our thoughts on it, and what implementation and planning would look like.
Just to be clear, the state is going to be recommending a middle school science curriculum that is spiraled in nature rather than layered.
Yeah.
So it's something that we just wanted to show and kind of preview. There'll be a lot more conversation, but I thought the data was a good place to start, that we, the percentage of students scoring advanced is just not where it should be.
Correct.
I think the state feels that a layered approach is not making sense, as having a spiral approach with cornerstone tasks that cuts across all of the sciences.
Ms. Lippert, do you want to, do you have any questions? Ms. Warren?
Well, I'm looking forward to hearing about the new curriculum approach to science. I think that's really exciting. I know there's been a lot of talk lately about science, technology, and art, and is there any opportunity for us to maybe bring those together with the applied math science, the art, and the science class as well?
Steam. Yeah, actually, we were just talking about that today, actually. As you know, I have two art teachers, and there's some field trips happening that are very exciting, that some of the academic teachers want to take. And every time I turn around, can we bring in our teacher? I'm like, they got to teach art. But it's definitely on our radar.
Okay.
So it definitely is. Thanks.
Just a quick question, a couple, actually, but with the science and social studies, I'm encouraged by kind of the additional writing that's there, and my oldest is in sixth grade, and so, you know, I think it's, he may not agree, but I love, you know, that he's getting, you know, spelling tests for his social studies work and that, you know, the focus on it is obviously there and starting in sixth grade. But to that point, in terms of the building blocks, and obviously, they kind of, you know, go up, last or this year, we're starting with a four-person team, or additional four-person teams at the sixth grade level. And it's obviously too early to tell right now the impact that that has, but I'm wondering if you're seeing or starting to see kind of that cohort, say, who may have started in the four-person team, how well they are doing as they kind of move from sixth to seventh and eighth grade, and if we might start to think about, what would it take to have four-person teams in seventh and, and eighth grade, and kind of moving that model up?
Instead of the five?
Right.
Great question, actually. The, because we expanded in sixth grade, the four-person teams, for two primary reasons. The first was to strengthen special ed, and this is the first year we've done that, and we've seen growth there, too, already. I was in a learning center today, and the teachers are working with one team instead of two for the first time, and you can see the tightening up fast, which is great. And then the other advantage of that four-person team compared to the two is, we only have one team now teaching two subjects instead of all of them. So many of the subject area meetings I've attended already, very focused, less teachers. So you have four people talking about decisions to make versus sixth and seventh, and then they've got two subjects, so I've already seen growth there, too. About seventh and eighth, I think that's a great thing to look at. It's a big thing, but it's definitely a good thing to look at, and restructuring a lot. Yeah, definitely.
I just want to ask a quick question about long comp. Is that something, I don't know if it's been looked into, but is that something where they've seen a trend from, like, seventh to sixth and down to, I don't know if long comp has been an issue in general with the students?
We've only taught tested in fourth and seventh, gets the long comp.
I'm sorry?
And tenth. Fourth, seventh, and tenth are the only grades that take the long comp.
Okay.
And plus, on top of that, they also take the reading comprehension test, so they're tested heavily in seventh grade. So, and when Dr. Price showed her slide, the fourth grade long comp, it was pretty good, but we dipped, so we have to take a look at that and see what's going on there and what's differences.
And briefly, I just have two quick questions. First, congratulations on knocking math growth out of the park. We're looking forward to the sustainability. And I know that's going to be a challenge.
We're not going to sustain SGPs of that. I just want to be honest.
We can narrow that gap.
So we want, yeah, and that, that was the other observation, is while the state average was flat and our growth was high, if you look at the eighth grade, it was just the opposite. We were flat and state growth was high. So I think we have, we have some, some trends we might want to look at there as well.
Definitely.
And the, the other area, obviously, you mentioned the LA median growth is also a challenge. But again, as we go through the, the review of the data, we just really want to make sure that we have something that's sustainable that integrates nicely across, so I encourage you to be able to think about that as you move forward.
So now we're going to the elementary, and if we can go back to my original request, let's let the five elementary school principals go, and then we can ask questions, if that's okay? And we went alphabetical, so it's not because we like Mr. Landry the most.
It's not any else, Sergeant.
It's not any else.
That's a good try.
That's how it sometimes goes.
Nice try. You're up, Mr. Landry.
Well, that went, that went a little better than the chord joke earlier, so.
Doing better now.
So the first slide is just showing a nice little uptick in the advanced and proficient scores at third and at fifth grade last year. You may be saying, which, fourth grade? Wait a couple of slides, you'll see that. But, I mean, it's going in the right direction. We talked, we've been talking a lot about advanced and proficient scores, and our areas of concern that will come up really relate to subgroups and the number of kids and percentages in the needs improvement and warning categories. We're, we're pretty excited, happy, seeing some consistency, I think, in this, this area of student growth and the percentile. So fourth and fifth grade students are the first ones to experience student growth percentiles. And in ELA this past year, we scored a 52, which And, um, in ELA this past year, we scored a 52, which is, um, above the 51 that we really want to score, which, you know, we talked in the years past about level ones and, and, you know, pushing for that. But, you know, that scores points for the school and all that stuff, but it's really showing students moving from point A to point B. And, um, you know, outperforming more than half of the kids that were in their cohort from the year before. So it's, it's, um, we like to see that in ELA. And in our math area for growth, uh, strong again. So we're very proud of that. A few years ago, we, we focused all of our school goals, our individual and collaborative goals on math. And since that time, a lot of the work that we've done just has carried over and seemed to have affected the achievement here. So when we get to the areas of concern and the next levels of work, that's what we're starting with, uh, for ELA a lot more this year and hopefully we see the same kinds of results. Even the, the last few things, just even our, um, low-income students and our students on IEPs currently, their growth looked pretty good too. So I just wanted to call that out. Areas of concern, fourth graders, we see a downtrend there as far as the numbers of advanced and proficient students this past year. So that's something we need to address with our current fifth graders and how, how we provide them support. And then the slides on the right side there are for ELA and math and that's the subgroup breakdown. And you can see the, the numbers, the percentages of students in needs improvement and warning is really high, especially in the, um, special ed subgroup.
I just want to note that the ends are in the legend here, Mr. Lippert.
Okay.
So, yeah, when we look at takeaways here, we've got to intervene with special education students to bring up those proficient and advanced numbers and definitely decrease those warnings and needs improvement kids, uh, what they get for scores. And, um, like Dr. Price said, we're exploring new instructional methods and models and there's going to be that review. But also at the school level, we've already started something, a partial inclusion program that, um, is something new this year. And it's a district program, but it's for students who need a significant amount of support. And it's something new. Before these students were part of the regular inclusion caseload and we did our best to manage, manage their needs. And this is a little more direct and the services are different and we hope to see some differences in what those kids can show for achievement along the way. But the second and third bullets, they really call out the numbers of students in needs improvement and warning categories in ELA and math. I mean, 68% there, 78% in math. Even though the growth was pretty good, that's not good. So that's what we've got to look at and do more work with. More attention focused on this, the grade five group, as I mentioned, because of that downtick there in their performance levels for advanced and proficiencies. And so how we'll do that? We're, we're looking at the, um, structure of our days and we've done some work with this over the course of the last few years. I've mentioned it when, when I've come here, but, um, it's, it's building the, the most robust intervention schedule we can in the regular school day, providing extra time and support for kids at every grade level. And sometimes, like for this fifth grade group, um, we're plugging them in in different times during the day, so giving them multiple opportunities to get extra time and support in class and outside of class. So we're kind of excited about a few changes that were made to last year's schedule that will impact their performance in class every day and also on assessments like this. We're having four grade-level meetings a month with teams of teachers that can talk about student work and can plan instruction, that can work on assessments together in a common way and, and find out what's working and what's not. We have building-based professional development continuing and this year we're doing much more with ELA, but this connects to the district work that we'll be doing over time too. And, uh, we, we really talked a lot about rigor and questioning last year and we're going to continue to work on that stuff so that we're asking the right kinds of questions of our kids and expecting high, you know, demanding things from them without just asking for recall. We're asking them to think more. That's important. Title one staffing, it was mentioned a little bit earlier, addressing the low-income students at our schools, but also reaching out more and putting those extension roles out there to see if we can really have an impact on how families support the school. I feel like we have a great community at the Atkinson School and they do a lot, but we, we need to try new ways to get people connected. Mr. Milli and I went to a, um, actually it was a parent, visit, uh, parent-teacher visitation, home visit conference today and how we can actually implement something like that in North Andover where we're actually going, teachers are going into the homes, you know, forming relationships with the families and seeing how that can engage parents and families a little bit more. And, and the impact, there was a lot of qualitative research and stuff that was shared about the, the difference that makes every day in the classroom for kids' attitudes and families' attitudes related to school. We need some of that at the Atkinson School, so I'm hoping maybe we can explore that a little bit more.
Okay, Mr. Clark.
All right. All right, so the slides that I selected for here are the percent of our schools broke down by grade level three, four, and five for advanced and proficient in, on the math ELA. You may be thinking, hey, where's the ELA? Those aren't coming up though. We're, we're very excited about this. Now, you can see a few peaks and valleys in there, but we're still relatively consistent over the, over the span. But if you notice, our 2015 scores, for the exception of fifth grade, it's a little bit lower than the highest that they've been and we're really excited about that. A lot of that is due to the hard work that the teachers put in last year. Like Mr. Landry mentioned, over the past few years, they've been working last year, we really had a focus on our individual and team goals on math and how can we attack this? Because if you look at the SGP chart up there, you notice there's a huge dip from 2013 to 2014 in our growth and our student growth percentile, 75 to 47. And 47 is below the 51 that we're trying to hit. So that was a real target for me, if you remember last year, um, to get up above that 51, which we did and we're very excited about now. You know, we're still going to be continuing that because we want to get to that 60 as well. But we were so excited about that. This was such a great story to tell the staff on those opening days. They were excited about it, that they saw their hard work really paid off. So just some of the takeaways. The one that I really, I want to bring note to is actually the third bullet, that increase of percent of students scoring advanced and proficient from 2014 to 2015. So in 2014 in ELA, 80% of our students were in advanced and proficient and in math, 79. And that jumped for ELA from 80% to 82%, which in a large school is a good amount of students that got up into that range. And, but our math is 79% to 87%. That's just a huge growth and we're so excited about that. And both of those numbers, the 82% and the 87% are the highest that they've been in the past 10 years. So it's something that we're, we're very proud of and definitely a strength and some improvement for us. Moving on to our concerns, the two, uh, graphs that I chose to put up there are our subgroups broken out. And you can see the red bar, I don't know if you can read, the red bar is our special ed subgroup and that's where we are struggling the most right now. You can see the ends in there and if you look at the math one, you're like, whoa, look at that purple bar. There are four LEP students. They're just really good at math, I guess. But if we see our, uh, we're looking at this sped subgroup and it was great because this was something that I was looking at at the end of last year. I'm like, okay, I think this is something I want to work on. And one of the first things that Dr. Price and I talked about when we had our entry meeting in July, I was like, you know, this is kind of where I'm thinking. She's like, yes, that's what I'm thinking too. So it was nice, right off the bat to have that support. So if we look ahead at kind of what the takeaways are from there, Millie, thank you. So 57% of our special ed subgroup scored in the needs improvement and warning. Uh, and 51% of our sped, special education subgroup scored in the needs improvement and warning in math. So it is an area of concern. Now, the numbers aren't huge like Dr. Price mentioned earlier, but every kid counts and that's kind of what we're looking at. And, you know, we're trying to hit all of these students and as we continue to build our instruction and look at best practices and focus on these students, it's going to benefit all students, which is really important. So where do we go from here? Where do we go with this next level of work? So similar to what Dr. Price talked about and similar to what Mr. Landry talked about, we're looking at this schedule and how can we get this schedule to be more inclusive for our special education, education students? What we're really looking at right now is how do we get our special ed teachers in the classroom more, working with these students real time? There's so many benefits to that because if they're in the classroom, they're working with the students on what the fourth graders, third graders, fifth graders, kindergartens, whatever are working on in that moment, but they're also modeling. And they're also able to collaborate real time and co-teach and just take that team approach to education that's going to, like I just said, benefit all kids and that's what we're looking for. And we're also, you know, in my former life as a teacher at the Atkinson Elementary School under a wonderful mentor, Mr. John McLeer. Oh, I mean, I'm sorry. Mr. Landry.
Sorry.
I know, why did I pick this seat?
John McLeer.
Good thing.
You know, in addition to their common planning time throughout each week, we've incorporated, and I, I call it Landry larceny, it's my new hashtag for Twitter. I stole something from him, he calls Landry lessons where he meets with a grade level. So I've got Clark's classroom going now and I take the whole set of third graders and I do a raise lesson with them. We talk about what's going on in the school and that's a time, and we're really excited about this and my staff is really excited about this because it's a time that my classroom teachers, the special ed teacher at that grade level and the teaching assistants all work together. And they all talk about, okay, what are all of our roles? What are the expectations for all of our roles? And it's really great because again, we're looking at that team approach and we're getting to that idea of all of these kids are all of our kids. And when we get to that mindset, it's really a nice way to get that inclusive nature and that team model approach to educating all of our students and seeing that growth. Like last year, we had a, we had a very strict focus, not, not exclusive, but strict on math. We, our goals were on math and this year we're kind of focusing on ELA now because we want to get those numbers up as well. Our numbers there were good. We had a little dip in third grade, I will say, but other than that, our fourth grade numbers and fifth grade numbers went up as well. So we're very excited about that. But we're focusing on that and we're really, especially as Dr. McQuaid mentioned, with the long comp in fourth grade that adds another, adds another feature to it. So we really want to attack that as well.
Okay, Mr. Cushing.
Okay, here we go. And now I know why I was asked to limit my time, so my colleagues can have more. Okay? So anyways, but...
It might be based on past history, Mr. Cushing.
Oh, okay, I see. Very good.
Not that I would have heard any of that.
But, but just to address Mr. Landry's earlier question about, you know, was tomorrow's activity, uh, connected to the common core? I just want to say that we are having STEM projects over at Kittredge that are attached to the, get it, Apple STEM? We thought it'd be very appealing to our kids. So anyways, okay. So first of all...
I previewed the slides and the presentation, not the jokes. I just wanted to add. So first of all, we're looking at, uh, charts that show our, uh, performance of, uh, from
2006 through 2014. As you can see, that we did have an increase in performance from, uh, year 2014 to 15 in both third grade and fourth grade. We had a slight decrease, uh, in fifth grade. However, we're still riding in the 80th percentile, you know? So if you could, uh, look at our next slide, grades three to five, 80% of all students were proficient in, uh, or higher in ELA. 2014 to 2015, uh, we saw improvements in grade three that went from 67% to 85% of proficient or higher. In fourth grade, we saw it go from 66 to 73. Now, this can be attributed to a couple of things. Uh, one of the things is that we definitely have a couple of teams now in third grade and fourth grade that really have, you know, they really have drank the Kool-Aid, you know? And they kind of understand what we're trying to do with kids, you know? They know what kids need to learn, you know, how we need to look at data so that we can, you know, push the performance of our students. The other thing was, is that we really had a lot of common goals around ELA last year with grades three, four, and five. And, uh, one of the things that we really looked at was how our kids were performing, performing with, uh, the open response questions. And so we did a lot of work on that last year. We still are looking this year as that's an area that we can still show some growth in performance, you know? Because we actually went up to a, a score of 2.7 on the open responses, you know, and the high would be a four. So we still have areas to improve there. So I think that we'll see a lot of gains there again, uh, last year. Even though we showed a decrease, uh, in performance, uh, in fifth grade, we still had, uh, an SGP, uh, of 79 in ELA and 60 in math. And if you look at that, we've already talked about 51 or higher is what we're looking for, uh, in, uh, SGP. So we did still make remarkable gains in that area. Additional improvements to kind of highlight, last year, our school improvement plan really focused on the high-needs subgroup, uh, in, uh, ELA. The CPI target was, that was given to us by the state, was 71.5. And the actual, uh, score for 2015 was 84.7. Uh, the math CPI, uh, target was given to us by the state was 79.8 and we hit 82.6. So again, there was a lot of focus on that group. There was a lot of talk. There was a lot of looking at data to see just what those students need and where we needed to bring them. You can see, these are the charts of our, uh, high-needs groups. Still the area of concern, and you've heard it throughout the, uh, throughout the evening tonight, is the special ed subgroup. And Jim, if you could go to the next slide? Uh, so the takeaway of, for the areas of concerns is when we start to look at the 2015 MCAS data, 52% of our sped students, uh, were needs improvement or lower in ELA and 56% in math. Uh, so we're going to take some very serious action steps in really looking at that subgroup. Uh, you know, we've already done an analysis of our 200, uh, 2015, you know, MCAS results and looked at the sped students, you know, and who were those that, uh, fell below proficient? And then we're utilizing now the map data, you know, from our common assessments at the beginning of the year to really pinpoint the skills that are really needed to be addressed with those students. Uh, and, uh, we're increasing, just like my colleagues have talked about, you know, we have several different ways on how we do get teachers together each month. Uh, like Mr. Landry had mentioned, uh, we meet with our grade levels, you know, four times, you know, during the month. So what we're going to do is we're going to look at how can we increase the sped and classroom teacher collaborative time so that they can really hone in on those areas that those students need to increase improvement?
Very efficient, Mr. Cushing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Foster, Sergeant?
Yes, um...
Any jokes?
I don't have any apple jokes. I was, apple doesn't fall from the tree. Drink the apple juice, the Kool-Aid.
Oh, Kool-Aid.
I tried, it was much time, it was so short, usually a longer, I can... Okay, so Sergeant's strengths, um, our advanced and proficient in ELA, you can see from, um, from 2014 to 2015, we, we rose, um, with the advanced and proficient, um, by a few points, which was, it's a trend that's been happening over the last few years that we're continuing. Um, you can also see with the SGP, the student growth percentile, we went up from 57 to 59. And 59 is one away from 60, which would be considered above target from the state, so we're pretty proud of that. We did spend, I'll get into that, but we did spend a lot of time with our professional development working in that area. Um, our SGP with our ELA students on IEPs, we did raise, rise from one, um, from 2014 to 15, um, from 47 to 55.5, which is a, a good thing. We're, we're very happy about that. And also in the math, with the growth percentile, um, we rose from one year to, from last year to this year, which we're again proud of and actually, um, right, right around, right slightly above the, the district average. So we're, we're pretty proud about that. Um, so we're continuing the upward trends with, with the all students in the ELA and the reading, uh, the positive growth again, like I mentioned, for all students in ELA and students on IEPs and both ELA and math. It's exciting. And, um, it's a result of really from the hard work that the, the school's been putting in. We did the FCI, the, the facilitators of collaborative inquiry teams. Team this year, this past year, we started at the Sergeant Sue Consoli, Mary Beth Susie, um, Ms. Leahy, Karen Leahy, the assistant principal, and myself are part of that team. Ms. Leahy, Karen Leahy, the Assistant Principal, and myself are part of that team. And really, you know, got together, looked at the data, identified areas, got the teachers involved in looking at the data. And what we did was created these priority-driven activities within certain areas. So if we found a weakness, mostly in ELA, but a little bit in math, if we found a weakness, we would focus on it in our PD. The teachers have these binders that they're making now, and it would be something they could share with, you know, they would meet amongst themselves and also share amongst themselves about things to do in certain problem areas in ELA mostly, again, and sometimes in math. Lots of collaborative time, and again, the data teams, we met a lot last year, identifying areas and instituting strategies to address certain problem areas. The areas of concern, again, we, you know, opposite here of some of the other schools, we had the strength in ELA, but in math, if you look at the bottom slide, we actually went down from last year to this year in our advanced proficient percentage, 68% to 64%. That falls beneath, below the district average. And it's also getting close to the state average. That's problematic. So where that's gonna be, and you'll see in a minute, that's gonna be our primary focus this year. There's a couple of, the top two slides there, we have students on IEPs, again, advanced proficient, not really much growth in those areas between one year and the next in both ELA and math. So that's definitely, as sort of echoing tonight, that's an area that we're gonna be focusing on next year. The takeaway, again, we're having issues right now, concerns in math and overall, but for students on IEPs performing below the district average in math in ELA. Our big plan to address this year, and I'm pretty excited about this, we're instituting the intervention blocks that we hadn't done this past year. And it's, by doing this, we're gonna significantly increase the special needs students' time in ELA and in math, the time they get with instruction. In the process currently of collecting and analyzing the data, we have a sort of a wide area to math, okay? But we're gonna do a data drill down, looking at the MCAS, looking at math, looking at NASTAP, administrative walkthroughs, which we, at the high school last week, we'll be doing at the Sergeant in two weeks. Again, looking at certain areas of practice in the area of special education and seeing what more can we do for the kids in that area. So with all that data, we'll be crafting our professional development for the school year. There's a refocus this year. We started, I think, actually Greg mentioned it earlier, that the annual teacher goals, that's the goal, that's the main focus. We did, I did a share the first couple of days, actually, we spent some time on looking at the data and talking about how we're going to, you know, teacher goals, specific teacher goals, will be in and around these two areas, math and special education. Again, it's also the goal of the whole, the PD for the year, the building-based PD. It's a couple running themes right now. Again, I've been meeting with my FCI team. It's an all-in, which is a little different than in the past. You know, MCAS is usually, is three, four, and five. But, you know, the kids, we're having from K to two, and a lot of these skills that they're, they're being tested on and they're learning, and the upper grades, it depends on the sort of having cornerstones to build up to that. So we're, that's a focus throughout the school. When we're talking about math, we're talking about what can we do for math, for kids in math throughout the school, not just in the upper grades where they're taking the test. Collaborative time, we're working with the teen time that they get to talk, I have four classrooms per grade level, and they get time to meet, talk about certain things, but also meeting with other things. This last, the last Professional Development Day, it was a time where we had to share, like the fifth graders got to hear what the fourth graders had to say about the kids that they're seeing now. The third got to hear what the fourth, and so forth and so on. So that was something interesting and very, something the teachers have wanted, and I think they're getting a lot out of that as well. Focus again on rigor and relevance, making sure that all the kids, not just, you know, some of the lower achievers, high achievers in the middle, that we're taking them where they are, giving them challenging work, and ultimately, you know, for the betterment of their learning. And finally, working with the district-wide consultant, special education consultant. I know Dr. Price has mentioned that we're having someone come in here, so we'll be working with them as well, take a closer look at special education.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. I'd like to introduce Mr. Raymond, our new principal at Thompson Elementary, my first hire. I told him no pressure.
Yeah.
Mr. Raymond.
Well, that's exactly what she said, no pressure. So I first want to say, first of all, last but not least is the Thompson School. And I also want to, you know, first of all, at the outset, just say a couple of things. Since this is my first time before you, I just want to take the opportunity to thank the school committee, Dr. Price, and the leadership team for welcoming me into North Andover. I'm proud and happy to be here, thrilled to be here, proud to be the new principal at the Thompson School. I look forward to hopefully a good, long career here and really moving, helping to move the district and the school forward. And I also want to recognize as the new principal, those who came before me as the leaders there. So in keeping with that, in thinking about this data, I want to recognize Lorene Marks, the former principal at Thompson School, because really collectively with the staff and under her leadership were the results that, you know, I'm currently looking at and looking at plans to move the school forward. So I just wanted to mention those things at the outset. So you've seen these graphs at different times. Actually, the Thompson School performed really well, as you'll see in a minute, on, in both the ELA and the mathematics areas. I did choose to put the math slides up here. And if we move on to the next slide, overall, and looking at a broad base at the Thompson School, the advanced and proficient scores for the students in grades three through five were above the state average in both areas, ELA and math. And when you look at the ELA scores in those two categories, advanced and proficient, they equaled the highest percentage the school has received in the last 10 years. And when you break out the mathematics scores for grades three through five, those advanced and proficient scores are actually at their highest level in the last 10 years. So I feel like that's some pretty significant data for the school. The CPI, which you've heard mentioned very briefly by Rich, which is a measure to the extent to which the students are progressing towards proficiency, actually increased by 3.1 this year in both the ELA and the math areas, which is a healthy increase. And the math CPI is actually at its highest level in the last four years. We also have concerns, a very similar slide to ones you've seen. And what I like to keep in mind in looking at a slide like this is, you know, this really helps me get a broad perspective of the school as well. And in looking at it, it's, you know, first of all, as we've mentioned earlier, the numbers. Sometimes you have a very small number of students in a category, which, you know, if one of those students doesn't do well, then it skews the data one way or the other. So that's an important consideration. But as you've heard, you know, from a lot of the other principals, we do have some concerns and some questions about our subgroups. And in looking at it overall, with the students that took the test last year, you're talking about a 60-40 split. So when you look at all students versus our subgroups, subgroup students represented 60% of the total student population in those grades. So that's an important statistic going forward, and it speaks to the fact that we need to really consider and look at, what are we doing for those students as we go forward? Those statistics can change year to year, but still an important consideration. And if we go to some of the takeaways, as I started to mention, certainly, you know, one of the takeaways is the performance level for the multiple subgroups there that you saw in that slide, in the advanced and proficient categories is much lower. And overall, the students in the subgroups perform much more in the needs improvement range. So that's an area that we need to look at. And a few bullet points about how we're going to do that. One of the things, one of my sort of philosophies as the new principal, and it sort of fits with the leadership philosophy I have coming into a new school, is if I need to understand where the school's gonna go, I first need to understand where the school's at. Because it's not gonna be effective for me as a leader to plow ahead in the school without really listening to the people that make up the school. So in keeping with that, in looking at the plans, one of the things I'll be doing is really looking at the master schedule and looking at the priorities, talking to elementary colleagues. You've heard this about the schedule at the elementary level. I guess that's the last slide. I can kind of pull things together, too. And so we'll be looking at the Thompson master schedule, talking together about practice in the different buildings, and really focusing on, you know, how are we looking at staff collaboration and looking at student work, to having those opportunities in the schedule to do that? It's important to know, the thing about staff collaboration, that's not really just teacher-to-teacher in a grade level, that's also support staff to classroom teacher. It's all the individuals in the building really taking a look at what's happening for the kids in these grades and what are we doing? So per my principal entry plan, I have been meeting with all the staff individually since I started this summer. I have met with just about every staff member individually at this point. I've hosted a couple of parent meetings. And my next step, as you can see up there, is to meet with grade levels in small groups. And as part of that work with the grade levels, I am working on developing a plan in conjunction with the staff that, first of all, looks at the strengths of the school. That's an important consideration. We want to capitalize on our strengths. We want to look at areas for improvement. There are areas for improvement, as you can see from the slides, and these are just data looks. There are always areas to improve in a school beyond the data, which can in many ways have an effect on the overall data, the climate and so forth. And the other important consideration is to use that information to set future priorities. So really looking with the staff throughout the year at action planning. So as a result of this principal entry plan, really engaging the staff in what are our priorities, twofold, priorities that I've identified and also working with the staff on priorities collaboratively that they identify. The idea being, we need to start with a couple of things and do them really well and not pick everything, because we can't do everything all at once, with a focus on long-term success and improvement. And then the last bullet there is to really analyze the data that we get. I put at-promise students. That's just my term I've used. It's a little term I picked up through the years as principal. It comes from some work I did several years ago in looking at at-risk students, because there's a lot to say about a name with staff. And if you talk about at-risk students, then people will often think about what kids can't do. And one of the first things I said to the staff on opening day is, you will learn about me that I don't do very well with can't and never and I don't know, but I do really well with how are we gonna figure that out? What's the answer for that? Because when we talk about kids in terms of, oh, they never pay attention, they never do this, that really misrepresents kids, because there are times when they can. It might be microscopic and small, but there are times. And if you speak to your staff about at-promise, it really sends a tone to the staff of, people think about it a whole different way in their mind. And they start looking at solutions and thinking about kids in a way that they can address areas of strength for kids, if you will. So we're gonna look at that, we're gonna review the data, and again, through that data, I'm gonna work with the staff to develop strategies and steps for the future. All of this is really to build long-term success for the Thompson School. It's certainly not gonna happen right away, but we're gonna work really hard this year to really identify those priorities that we want to set going forward and really maintain a school that has a really strong community. We're gonna do all this, as you've heard, and this, I guess, is the wrap-up, is the last slide, within the backdrop of the district leadership team. You know, we've heard about district walkthroughs, because individually, we're, you know, I don't have all the answers. So individually, we each don't have all the answers, but collectively, we have a lot of experience. So, you know, I appreciate Dr. Price and Greg bringing us together and really looking at what's the practice going on in the different buildings and, you know, maybe even in other districts, and how can we bring that to our schools to really advance the kids? So that's sort of my ending wrap-up piece on the last slide. So, thank you.
Okay, lots of digests. As we go through the committee, just as a point of matter, we will have these on the district website, if they're not already?
Already there.
Great, great. So, Mr. Tracy, did you have any comments?
Sure. First of all, thank you, all of you, for being here tonight. Very thorough presentations. I know, I think I speak for the whole board, and say we appreciate your time and the effort you put into it. Sounds like you've identified your strengths and you know your soft spots and you're taking the right actions. I guess just a personal comment, you know, my former life as a state legislator, you know, I got into office right when, you know, MCAS was, you know, getting, it became graduation requirement, I think right around the time I got elected. There was a lot of teeth gnashing about it, and people were afraid that it was a high-stakes test. And, you know, I was a big supporter of MCAS, and I still believe it's important we have that as a graduation requirement. But I gotta be honest with you, my enthusiasm for MCAS has, you know, waned over the years. It started off as fourth, eighth, and 10th grade, and now it's grown to this behemoth where, you know, sometimes I think, you know, just to justify people's employment down in Malden, you know? So I must say, I have a little bit of cynicism about where it's grown to. I think it's important that we assess the progress our kids are making, but sometimes I wonder if we're missing the bigger picture. So I guess one question I have, and has to do with the stats up there, because I think sometimes stats are very misleading. Do the elementary school teachers, anyone, how's the, how did the teachers pitch the test to a third grade? What do you say to the kids? Like, how important is this test in relation to other quizzes and tests they're taking? And what's their, you know, we, I think adults place so much importance on MCAS, but I'm just wondering how it's first pitched to the kids?
Well, we try to embed a lot of former test items into their daily work without really putting a focus on it. It's just, it's a challenging item, challenging problem, try to think your way through it, work individually as a team. We don't put a ton, we don't talk MCAS all year long. But as we approach, January comes along, then we start, at the third, fourth, and fifth grade, we start talking about it a little bit as far as just being prepared, but not being worried. It's that balance of building anxiety and try, we're trying not to do that, but building skill levels so that they can be prepared in order to answer those. So we've got to expose them, we've got to expose them to these kinds of items, but I don't know, it's always, it's a challenge really to say, how much emphasis do you put on it day-to-day, calling it out, making it, you know, part of their weekly experience? And how much do you just kind of, embed it so that it's not so prominent? It's just part of their schoolwork and daily activity.
And how, generally speaking, do they, are they anxious about it, though? I mean, do they have anxiety about it?
You hear from a lot of parents about it, yeah, you do.
And some kids do, some kids.
Yeah.
We try to do it nicely, we try to downplay it, but also, I'll go around, the teachers will talk about, it's not that type of test, you can't feel it, you know? You have to, we're just, it's here to help us find out about you, how we can teach you better, and not just this year, but in the future, future teachers, so.
It's a hard message to sell, though, you know, because they're the ones taking it, but we're the ones, you know?
Right.
Sharing, you know, learning about what we're doing, but it really still, they still feel it.
And so how do the results line up with individual students? You know, I mean, obviously, you can pick out the numbers of the kids who are in the needs improvement and warning, you know who those kids are. How does, how do those test results, obviously, we can't tell the specific individuals, but generally speaking, how do those test results match up with how they're doing on their other tests? Are the same kids who are getting the needs improvement also getting Cs and Ds on their paper? I don't, we don't do Cs and Ds, but generally...
No, right. But I, there's definitely a parallel, there's no question, you know, because, you know, the MCAS is just, you know, a, you know, an exam of what we have been teaching, you know, based on, I don't want to say the Common Core, but, you know, the curriculum frameworks, the frameworks that we have used, you know, for years in the state of Massachusetts. So, you know, I personally feel that the test at this point in time is pretty much aligned to those standards that we have set, you know? So at the end, you know, I mean, not to talk about, this is MCAS, this is MCAS-driven, this is what we're doing for MCAS, you know? It builds up to that. So when they do take that, like you said, high-risk test, you know, they're ready for it, you know? Because we've been focused on the standards that have been set by the state of Massachusetts.
Just two comments. First of all, I do think that one of the values of MCAS is, it does allow us to identify areas of need and support. And so although the test, I agree with a lot of your comments in terms of how big it's become, one of the things that, and the reason I really focused the presentation this evening was not on, are we this level, are we CPI, but where are our needs and where can we get better? And I think that that's a real value of this testing. And the other thing I would say is, I did a pretty sophisticated correlation analysis in my previous district between MCAS and GPA SAT scores. I actually found, at least in my previous district, there was a pretty high correlation between those things. Now, that was at the high school level. But I think for most of us, kind of the face validity, where we just say, does it seem right? It's rare that a student scores really poorly on MCAS that you anticipate is gonna score very well, or the opposite.
Very few surprises.
Normally, on face validity, just how does it feel, most of us, I think, would say that it's, there are definitely some outliers, but it's rare that there are significant outliers or significant number of outliers.
Okay. Well, I can only imagine, you know, in the elementary schools especially, where the kids may be a little more volatile emotionally, although you mentioned raging hormones and some of these, you know, taking the test. There's a lot of variables involved, and, you know, I do, I don't want to diminish the importance of assessments and making sure we're heading in the right direction. I think the message I'm getting today is that you folks understand that, you know? I'm not looking at, we gotta do that, we gotta crack the whip on this stuff. I think that you guys know, like I said... I think that you guys know, like I said, where your soft spots are, and you're working hard towards that, so I appreciate it. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, just as a parent of elementary students, one of the things they actually look forward to with the MCAS is being able to chew gum in school. They actually get really excited about, like, "We've got to go to Costco or BJ's and buy some gum," so they get excited about that piece. I don't know if it's all the test piece, but.
Thinking gum.
I'm sorry?
Thinking gum.
Thinking gum, is that what we call it? A couple of years ago, I don't remember if we start last year, but we actually were able to look a little bit at some of the students who were missing a lot of time for nurse visits, and the impact that that actually had on MCAS results. So, not necessarily saying that, you know, we have to dive into that, you know, next meeting or something like that, but I don't know if there's a continued correlation with that, and that may be something that we just want to look at.
Sheriff Barnes, that is planning to come back and address.
Okay, all right. Again, I just want to thank all the principals for coming today, and obviously, there was a lot of time and effort kind of put into presenting the materials and kind of working through them with Dr. Price. I've been here for three-plus years now, and we always kind of hear a lot of things of, you know, "We're trying this, and we're doing this," and I think tonight, as I sat here, I heard some really different things, and I think that they're really encouraging for me. And, you know, the first and foremost thing is really kind of that outreach that we're taking with some of our different neighborhoods and schools, and being able to get out, to have advisors and tutors and teaching assistants and college students and tutors kind of working with our students. So, I think that that's great, and hopefully, if we start to see that that's working and continuing, that our other schools can certainly kind of continue that as well. And I know, you know, we have things like math clubs after school, and just opportunities for them to work on those. So, I think that that's great, and I commend all of you guys, and women, and your staff for being part of that as well. I think that this year, we're starting to hear more about the creativity of just kind of, I want to think, Mr. Clark kind of mentioned kind of pulling the, and Mr. Landry, pulling the students together and letting the teachers have a little additional collaboration time. And I think that that's just a huge catalyst for kind of sharing that information and being able to move the needle a little bit more. And I think in your schools in particular, because you have a larger staff, it's more difficult for you to do that, whereas, you know, if you've got, you know, two teachers at 3rd grade, you know, it's easier to just kind of pull them in, but now you're really taking on 100 kids if you pull in those 3rd graders.
I guess so.
I'm sure you can, yeah. I'm sure you're good at juggling multiple kids right now, so that's great.
[laughing]
Just wait. And the efforts that we're taking in terms of reaching out and identifying, you know, those students who we need some additional efforts with, and bringing a consultant in to kind of take a look at the fresh eyes, with fresh eyes, and really go forward with that, I think that that's great. The one piece that I guess I just struggle with, and I don't know what the answer is, I don't know if there can be an answer tonight or something like that, but I wonder why there's just such disparity, I think, in some of our schools. I mean, I think if we're struggling to get to 60% at one of our schools, and we are at 80-something at another, like, I don't mean to say it in a long way, but how does that happen? I mean, I just don't see that.
So, my, one answer is, we have two schools in our district who have a very different makeup socio-economically than three of the others. And the reality is, when you look at outcomes based on SES, you see a significant difference. And so, I think that the makeups of our schools is, are very different. And so, you know, some of the schools achieving at lower levels would be anticipated, some of it would not. And we've been pretty straightforward with one another about where we should be and where we shouldn't be. That is not by no means an excuse, and I think you heard both Mr. Landry and Mr. Raymond talk about the fact that, you know, we have a large subgroups, many different kids, but that's not an excuse. I mean, we need to get to where we should be, and I think none of us at this table believe that different groups of kids should underperform. That's not what we believe. So, I think some of that is subgroup-related, and I think some of that's not. And, you know, I will say, as a superintendent, I've had some pretty honest conversations with the principals about those concerns, and that we should be feeling that, and I'm going to be quoting Jimmy Marini here, "That a North Andover education is a North Andover education, and whether you go to any of the five of our elementary schools, you should have that access." And some of that I will be addressing next time, based on the results of my entry plan, too.
And I just think it's great to actually be looking at it with those subgroups.
Absolutely.
We've never done that to this level of detail, so, thank you for that.
Okay. Ms. Landry?
So, thank you for all the work that you've done to put this together. I think, maybe piggybacking off of Mr. McDevitt, I think you're right, there are different demographics in school makeups, and I think for Thompson and for Atkinson, that's been beneficial in terms of getting Title I resources and be able to provide special programming. I think one of my concerns is that we have another, you know, sergeant doesn't have that Title I funding, and so, what can we do as a district to address the needs, particularly this year with math and with ELA? And how can we, as a district, then provide those types of resources, those students who are not making, they're not even making the state average? What do we do to support them? And I think it's, you know, it's great to get those resources for Thompson, Atkinson, but we need to look at, what can we do specifically so that a North Andover education is a North Andover education for all the students in North Andover? Some of the things that came out to me that were really great to hear were, I like Clark's lessons, I think providing that time, not only for the teachers, but also for support staff to work together, and special education teachers. I think that team model is so important, and probably doesn't get to happen very often where it's, you know, the teaching assistants and teachers and special ed. So, that's fantastic, and the opportunity for the principal to then be working with students and really get to know them and creating that community, and Mr. Landry will not.
It's really rewarding.
If it started with you, and that's how it came, and that's fantastic. And I think, you know, building that sense of community is so important. And, you know, the home visits that you had mentioned, I think that's an interesting approach, and so, you know, let's see where that goes. And I'd love to hear maybe more about that as the year continues. I think we'll maybe get a mid-year type of summary, and it'd be great to hear sort of how some of these interventions are working. Sorry, I have to go through all my notes now. Hold on. Kittredge, I don't want to forget Kittredge. It's, I don't write any notes. I'll have to get back to you, Mr. Cushing. Welcome, Mr. Raymond, thank you, it's great to have you here tonight. It's, again, I like this approach of meeting with the teachers and really getting that time to build community in your school, and I think that's very important, to build that team effort for the kids. So, it'll be exciting to see how that continues at Thompson. But just in general, I hope that there is opportunity between the schools, because there are differences and strengths in the different grade levels and in the different buildings. And I know that you're talking about data teams and grade-level meetings, and whatever we can do as a district to support that collaboration. And the math club sounds fantastic, you know, is that something that we can do at all of the schools? Or Sunshine Math Program, I know, happens at some schools, maybe not in other schools, and what are those additional programs that we might be able to have consistently across the district so that all of our kids can benefit? Like the homework club and things, are those things that we can bring over to sergeant school, and would that be a benefit? Or any of the other schools who have populations that maybe aren't getting those Title I resources? I mean, thank you.
Great, thank you. Ms. Lepick.
I just wanted to echo Mr. Tracy's thanks to all of you for the amount of effort you did put in on this. This is by far the best set of presentations I've ever received since I've been on the school committee, and that's a while now. So, I think, you know, you all have really done an outstanding job to sort of give us a pretty clear picture of where you think your schools are at, and where you think they need to be going. I also wanted to thank you, too, for giving us presentations in a common format, so we don't have to figure out the format of your presentation to try to understand what you're trying to tell us. So, that was a big help, too. I would like to echo Ms. Warren's comments. It's almost like we need an in-district Title I option, right? We have, some way we can help schools that need help that aren't Title I schools but still need some special effort. And from what I've heard tonight, it's very clear that when we get our special education consultant, a lot of times, it seems to devolve to process stuff, which is, you know, infinitely complex in that world, there's no question. But now, what we're seeing is academics. It's all about academics in special education and other of those subgroups, but primarily that group. So, you know, hopefully, the consultant can be picked and can help us with that particular area, which is where we really need the help, in the academic part of special education. Whatever we're doing, maybe we can just do it better or different or something. The other thing I'd just like to say, too, for me, is, I've heard all of this, and I'm still, I still struggle a little bit to know where, how we, the school committee, can help, right? So, I've always had this fantasy that when I have this presentation, you're all going to come, and everybody's going to have a request for money, right? It sounds a little crass, but everybody's going to have, and if I only had another $50,000, I could do all this cool stuff in my school, and would solve all these problems. And there's always this gap now. So, you guys are working like crazy to try to make all this get fixed, but we, allegedly, the resource people, the bag people, we don't know how to help. We don't know what it is that would, it would take to help you all on an individual basis or a collective basis. So, you know, as we get into the budgeting process, I would still encourage you all to think about how that might be broken down to the next level, so that we can help and we can make those trade-offs. And if we need to just sort of do the peanut butter spread on special education support across the district, you know, we know what that is, I mean, we know that that's a requirement. Now, can we meet the requirement? I don't know. We need to know that kind of stuff, so we can come, we can start thinking about that in terms of the budgeting process. That then will allow us to feel good about doing our job. We could put in the same amount of time and energy and work that these folks have done to try to work the academics, because that's what we can do, that is one of our.
It means really important to understand the academic profile of the district as we make the difficult decisions that are upon us in terms of the district. So, that's why I really wanted you to understand at a level that made lots of depth, because we're going to have to make some tough decisions, as we do every year.
And we understand, and I think, or I understand, and I think, you know, you've identified a number of different areas, and I wouldn't, I would be happy if they came up as specifics in a budgeting discussion, you know, case by case, school by school. I would be very pleased to.
I think all the principals are saying, "We just got permission to..."
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Show up for the bill, yeah.
We're coming back in a couple weeks, right?
But, you know, we've got, that's the kind of stuff we have to do, and we're never going to get there. I mean, you know, you guys can only do so much on a, you know, stay-the-course budget. And sooner or later, it just takes money. I mean, we have to spend money to solve some of these problems. You know, to echo one of our, one of our most esteemed school committee members, Dr. Chuck Orange, he, what he taught us was, not all problems can be solved by throwing money at them. So, I do acknowledge that. It's not just a money problem. Money oftentimes actually obscures the problem. But if it does take some money, that's what we need to know about, so we can help some.
Thank you, Ms. Lepick. For the sake of time, I'm going to try to be as brief as possible. So, again, thank you very much for sharing your thoughts, your presentations, and the result of your staff, some very, very shining examples of focus and attention. Some of the deltas, some of the areas that I saw that we might need to think more carefully about. As we saw some degradation in the 5th grade, I hope that we're doing a continuity check for these students as they're in the middle school, and make sure that we're not, we're not leaving them behind. It would be great if Dr. McQuade wouldn't know which student came from which school at the elementary level, but unfortunately, I don't think we're there yet. So, that's an area that I just hope that we're paying attention to. And as I look through our specific plans, I think we have some very interesting and novel ideas that are going to find their way through the district, but when we think about what we're going to do in the short-term tactical points, I see a lot of echo from last year and the year before and the year before in terms of, you know, analyze the data, look at the patient, look at the student performance.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's a healthcare.
Sorry, yeah, healthcare me.
Different job.
And I would encourage us to think out of the box in terms of what that really means from operization or, you know, implementing the programming for that. And also, I would also request that we do get a consistent view. I think there, a few of the presentations didn't include the same years and weren't presented in the same way, but it would be very helpful, I think, if we could get the same data across all the schools, so we could look at where there are real differences and where there aren't. So, I'll leave you with that, and also, welcome, Mr. Raymond, nice to see you.
Thank you.
We share a common origin of towns, so I look forward to.
Oh, really?
In Chelmsford?
Yep, that's where I previously worked.
Yeah, so, welcome and great job on onboarding on what could be a difficult conversation, but you guys did great tonight, so thank you.
Thank you.
So.
Go home.
Shall we dismiss the class?
Yes, dismiss the principals.
Thank you.
And I look forward to crunching with many of you tomorrow.
Indeed. Thank you. Great job. Give just a second.
And thank you guys very, very much.
Yes, thank you.
So, moving on with the new business, we have a first training capital improvement plan, is this, you familiar?
Okay. So, as we've talked about before with the capital improvement plan, it's a five-year plan, and we try to stay as consistent as possible with our requests for each year, and then we add on the new fifth year with any new requests. So, what you can see here is we have the completion of, well, not the completion, but the next phase of the facilities master plan begins for us in FY17, and that is the design of additional classrooms for the district. It's been on here for quite a while now, and basically, 10% is set aside for design, that's what would be voted on and approved at this year's town meeting, and then we would hire somebody, and they would help us, based on our enrollment projections and determine needs, design what that would be, and where it would be, what makes the most sense. So, that's the elementary classrooms project. The other project that comes up for FY17 is the sport turf field surface replacement. Same firm that gave us the estimate and the design of the track resurfacing, Gale Associates, they were involved in the initial construction of the high school and those sport fields, have given us this estimate for replacement. When they first went in, it was fairly early in the life of those fields, and the estimate was eight or nine years, and we've certainly gotten that out of them. And others are finding that as well, that they're lasting a little bit longer than that. But it is time, they're starting to degrade, and the main factor that does that is the sunlight. Starts to degrade the grass that's on the turf field. And that, they are developing better, so the field that replaces those may actually last longer than the ones that were in there originally. But that is what's scheduled for next year, and that would be approved at town meeting as well. And the third is just continuation of our IT infrastructure maintenance. If you recall from last year, we've set aside $100,000 for a lot of that infrastructure that has been put in place, and as we had said, it's close to $2 million in value, you should be setting aside about 10%. And we started factoring in 10% in FY20, which is when the materials that we put in should start to age out and have to be replaced. The FY19 item is the Atkinson roof. There's parts of that roof that are, flat roof, that will need to be replaced. This comes from work that we've done with Steve Foster, our facilities manager, and vendors that he's brought in to give us the estimate on that. That stays the same. And then, the new items are in blue, and those include a district-wide paving, and we have contacted Beta. Beta is a company that DPW contracts with, has a contract with, so we can utilize them, and they do assessment and estimates of paving needs. So, we're going to have them come in and evaluate all of our schools for the pavement needs. And right now, that number is just a placeholder to see what they come up with, and then we'll plug that number in there. High school sergeant and water drainage issues, they're not immediate needs, but we've identified them as, within the next few years, having to take care of those. So, those are in there. Same situation where we've got somebody come in and take a look and give a... Same, same situation where we've got somebody come in and take a look and give us a better estimate, and that's a placeholder as well. And then the other two items, we've been talking about these for a while, and the possibility of the second phase of the facilities master plan, if that does happen, then these could possibly become part of that. But if it doesn't happen, it still needs to be done, and those are renovations at Franklin and at Middle School. Those are the two schools that need some work. The others are fairly new, and all our, have had work done on them. But those two need flooring, ceilings, wall, you know, interior work, some systems. Franklin needs new unit ventilators, original, so you're talking 50 to 60 years old for those. So we've, we've put them all in as a renovation project, and I've been working again with Steve Foster. We've toured Franklin to put together a list, and we're going to the middle school tomorrow. So again, those numbers are right now just placeholders, and we'll have better numbers. The challenge there really is that you're looking four or five years out, things change a lot. So it's difficult to get a number, because what happens is, once I put a number in there, we're pretty much held to it. So it could limit, you know, if you, if you have things you need to do, it could limit it if you haven't put enough in there. So we want to make sure that we do that. So that's our CIP plan.
Okay. For the elementary classrooms?
Yep.
The number that we were carrying for a while in the CIP was a million.
Right.
How did we get to this number, this 1,007 almost?
Yeah, I could ask if anybody remembers. The most likely schools that would have classrooms added to them would be Franklin or Atkinson. Right now, we believe so.
So sprinklers and...
Correct. And if we do either one of those schools, since they don't now have sprinklers, in order to add on to them, we would have to sprinkle the existing building and the addition. And so we took the money that we had set aside for a sprinkler project and added it to this.
Okay. Now, even though the number looks very specific, it's still, you know, kind of a placeholder number. What are we thinking about for classrooms for that? Do we have some thoughts?
Yes, we have a number of thoughts, and, but we really don't want to get too specific in terms of, unless, except number. So I think we're somewhere between four and six additional classrooms in the district. That's going to be very much based on enrollment projections. And then, once we hire the firms to come in and help us, it's really going to be based on what we can do for the amount of money, and also what building's going to make the most sense. So, but I think the one thing we are going to be able to be specific on when we go to town meeting this spring is, we're looking for probably six additional classrooms.
And at least, there would, there would be some need to replace the portables, or whatever we want to call them.
Correct.
Part of the equation, right, is that they are coming to their, the end of their lives at both Atkinson and Franklin.
So we have, we have four, at least four classrooms.
We have five portables.
So...
But so, for instance, it's been made very clear with Mr. Mailer and I, for instance, that if, if, say it's Atkinson, I don't want to make any commitments at all. But if we were going to do for Atkinson, if we were going to add six, we'd actually have to add eight additional classrooms to take, make way for the two portables that would be removed.
Right, right, right. I understand. The turf fields, that's the main field and the one in the middle of the track.
Both, both.
Yeah, but that's the two.
Correct.
Yeah, two pieces.
Yep.
The $100,000 for the IT, is that more, or is that, what is the, how, what's, what would be our, give me some, for instances, on how we'd spend $100,000 next year?
Well, the flexibility is, if, if we don't require it for the maintenance, if we don't need to replace that much, we can use it for devices or, you know, other IT needs.
Because I, my, you know, I'm just thinking, you know, a lot of the stuff we have is pretty new. I mean, I got the, I got the $200,000, I got that. That's about the timeframe I think we'd have to start replacement, but we still could be a little early on in that.
But this year, we did spend almost all of it on the infrastructure with all the new switches.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, no, no.
So, however, we've made it very clear with Mr. Mailer that if we do not need that money for the infrastructure, this is also a place he believes we could use for devices.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just, I'm just, I'm more curious than anything. The, and so the money, the way out money, the Franklin and the middle school money is really refurbishment, that's not classrooms or anything like that?
Correct.
Okay, so it just kind of bring the...
The one caveat for that potentially is that if, again, if Atkinson does the full classrooms, and we go and look at Franklin, one idea is to take the gym space and potentially convert that to classroom space and potentially add a new gym at Franklin. So that might be an impact on classroom space, but that's the only one we anticipate.
Could that be a, kind of a suggestion for a facilities master plan, part two?
Yes, we, those, those are on the suggestions for the facility, if that is what happens. And we've had lots of conversations with Mr. Mailer about this, this is not a surprise.
But I mean, that might make that Franklin number 2 million, not 1 million.
No, no, I don't think so.
Refurbishment plus a gym, right?
Right. It could become that.
It could become bigger.
Yeah, that's what I'm, I'm just saying.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
So with the classrooms added, so I know that we keep talking about the population being somewhat consistent, but I think our need for classroom space is definitely outpacing that because of district programming and other, so the number of classrooms we need actually, my guess is, I don't know if there's a way to track it, but has actually increased pretty significantly.
Right, if we do needs assessment, that, you're right, it's probably going to have more of an impact on classroom needs than actual enrollment.
So is it, is it possible somehow for us to maybe like, think about that data or look at that data? Because now too, we're going to get the special ed consultant come in, and I would imagine that some of what might come out of that is that we do need more opportunities to have different interventions, and we need space for those things. So I don't know how to tease that out or what to do, but...
Yeah, you're right. And basically, what has to happen is, you know, it's, it's an ongoing process for us as we, we look at the, the needs, and we'll have to add that into the equation once it becomes available.
Okay. I just think, one of the things that I would love to see, just so we can kind of give that narrative to the public, is even though our population is staying consistent in terms of the number of people, but that our classroom needs, it's not the same. I think, I think it's very easy to say, same population, same classrooms, but I think that we need to get that message out, that it's, we actually need more than that because of programs.
Also assuming, Ms. Warren, that we're comfortable with the current class size.
No, it, that's a whole nother ball of...
But that's part, but that's part of the discussion.
Right, so I'd love to have maybe that, a bigger, more of that data together so that people can see that in what we do, you know, what we really need versus, I think probably this is more of a band-aid.
Right, and you'll see it before the architect sees it, because you'll, you'll have to chime in on it. But, yeah, you will see that.
Okay, thank you.
But I, I would agree with Ms. Warren. I think we should have a little bit of that discussion as we're thinking about the CIP now, you know, rather than just like...
Yeah, however, our projections are not where they need to be yet, and so until we have those, really, the rest of the conversation can't quite happen. But we're working on that.
I get that. What's that?
Thank you. Oh, no, I've got one more.
Whoops, sorry.
The track thing, I'm sure you're considering, but are we thinking about health and the materials that we're using and all of that?
Yeah, I came out a little, a while ago, that there were some concerns, but they were dismissed as, you know, research has shown that there's not that health hazard.
Thanks.
Tracy, what's that? A couple of quick questions. Our budget for, proposal for the track resurfacing, did that come in on target?
The track?
Yeah.
Yes, it did.
Okay.
Yep.
And when you talk about water and drainage issues, do you really think we can wait four years for that?
Yeah, it's, it's, things like the basins, you know, they're, they're starting to sink, but we can jack them back up. DPW can come in and does that for us.
So we're not talking about South foyer water represses in the high school or anything like that?
No.
And then the other question, this is less about CIP, but if we are going to put four to six classrooms in district, how do we start the conversation about the impact on our off-budget?
That's a good question, Mr. Gross. And that's part of, if you remember, going back to the conversation we had, which may lead to, we did talk about, one of our shared strategies was to look at class sizes, to look at our operational budget, and to look at facilities. So this is just the facility slice of that, and all of this has to be done. It doesn't make sense to have additional classrooms if we don't have the staff to, to put in them, and it doesn't make sense to have additional staff if we have nowhere to put them.
Agreed.
So the other domino in that string? Right, is redistricting, right? If I put eight classrooms at Atkinson, I'm almost begging to have to redistrict, whatever that means, right?
There's a lot of dominos.
There are.
Yeah, so...
So as we go forward with the discussion about the classrooms, I think we have to be prepared for those secondary conversations.
Absolutely.
All part of it.
But this, this is fabulous. What is, do we have our debt paid back for the Kittredge portables this year, or is that next year?
No, that was, the reason that community programs can now reside here is because that's been paid back.
Okay, so we have a right, we have the right debt ratio for 2017? In terms of, this is about the, the debt that we should be, we should be carrying?
Well, I think, so debt is not the right number. I mean, I think at this point, and I think you need to hear this from Mr. Mailer, so I don't want to speak out of turn, but there's very little debt that North Andover is carrying, a high school, Thompson, and I think there's maybe one other project. So, you know, a lot of what is being done now is not being done through a debt service.
Well, and not only that, with, our request is 168, almost 169 for the facilities master plan, $100,000 for IT. The 850, he was planning on not even borrowing for that project. He had to set that money aside to fund that without having to borrow. So we're only borrowing for FY '17 if they borrow less than $300,000.
Do you have a grand total, if you move that slide up a little bit?
Yep.
I just can't, the bottom.
Yep.
Right. So his number has always been 5%, and he's been below 5%, and this will not have significant impact on that number. It won't. So we're, our, our number is just factored in there, but his, total number is well within his...
And, and the other thing I think is, just to remind you of what I said last time and talking with Mr. Mailer, the vast majority of the needs on the town side, maybe not the library, but others in terms of structures, if you look around the town, most of it has been dealt with, especially once the town hall gets renovated. So he's very clear that if we do do a facilities plan master two, that the schools is actually going to be a significant part of that.
Okay, good, thank you. Great, moving on, I guess we're back on open business now?
Sorry.
No, that's quite all right. We have a second reading and approval request for fee waiver of North End of Music Association, and I'm not sure if we have any...
No, but there is a rejiggering of that, if you would look at item 7A. As we know, they were not able to get big bleachers out there, so the total fee for moving the bleachers was $189.
Okay.
Very different than the original quote.
What was the original quote?
Five, five something, 20 maybe?
Almost 600.
540.
So entertaining action, oh, sorry.
I was just going to say, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make a motion here to table this to the next meeting. I know you assigned me, or Mr. Devo assigned me to the facilities and fees committee, subcommittee. I was not able to meet with Mr. Millie yet on this issue. We're going to meet tomorrow morning to talk about it, and it's not a lot of money at the end of the day, but I just, I'm worried about the precedent sets, there's other, obviously, deserving associations in town that could probably benefit from this as well, and I think maybe we just, you know, hold off to the next meeting while we can figure out if it's something we want to continue going forward. So I make a motion to table, table this to the next meeting.
Okay, is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, abstain, so we'll table this to the next meeting. Thank you, Ms. Tracy. Moving on, we have our 2017 budget directive, continued discussion.
Ms., Chair, Mr. Gross, I, I'm wondering if, given the time, if it would make sense for us, we have a lighter agenda on, in the next time to move this to the next, the next meeting?
I would love that.
Motion in a second, I hear? Any discussion, the reason why we need to address this?
I can't make a motion, but...
No, no, but I think...
I can make a suggestion.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, light at the time, I think that's reasonable, so all in favor, tabling for the next meeting?
Aye.
Yes, 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 okay. Next topic is the 2016 budget status report.
So it's not much different than the last time. The only change being that we have counted for transportation cost increase of 5,239. So the last budget status report, we had shown a remaining of $60,000, and now it's 55,140. I will show you that I've done a little bit, a little bit of a change to the format in that I've gone back to May to show what we originally had as a contingency coming into the year, and what happened over the summer with regards to move-ins and changes, brought us to the 188, 379 that you saw at the last budget status report. And the reason I did that is because I'm going to be going monthly after school committee meeting to the FinCom to present to them. And after town meeting last year, I had gone to them and shown them that 344, 843. So I thought it was important to start from that number and show them what has happened. So as far as what you've seen, that's the only change from the last time.
Can you just redefine for us what that number is, that's at 344?
Well, what that was, was what changes occurred, mainly what students either graduated or...
No, I'm sorry, just that amount of money, where does it come from?
That's what I'm explaining.
Oh, no, no, the 344, how did we have, based on projections and budget, so it's, what it is, is when we actually do it all and actually put the tinkle in, we had about $344,000 turnover savings, et cetera, that was not allocated at the beginning of our fiscal year.
Most of it comes from those students who are graduating or aging out. So, and those are big-ticket items, so...
But this is not the town contingency money?
No, 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 no.
This is just in our budget.
We don't have allocated when we start.
Okay, just wanted to be sure. Thank you.
Exactly.
Covered.
Yep.
Just a, sort of a bleak question here, Mr. Millie. So now, we're spending money, we have been spending money for a few months. At some point, you're going to start giving us those, those reports again too, is that true?
Correct. Yep. As you know, the, the main holdup in that regard has been our transition to munis. We don't, right now, have the ability to generate very good reports. We're working through that.
So, let me see if I understand this. We've got a brand-new fancy schmancy accounting system, and we can't...
Well, it's not unusual with the transition.